All very proud of that and this is a testament to that all these people.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at seven oh four P M. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Swartz. All council are present.
Thank you, Tamara. Okay, this evening we have a group of Moses Lake Girl Scouts that I would like to recognize in honor of the International Day of the Girl, which occurs every year on October eleventh and to recognize empowerment of these young ladies to dream big and reach their full potential for human rights. First up this evening from the Girl Scouts, we have Ms. Audrey Bellamy to do our pledge of allegiance. So Audrey, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, all stand and follow Audrey.
Me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, and Audrey's gonna hang out and we also have a few other members of Girl Scouts here this evening, including Beatrix Owens and Amelia Donaldson. And they were going to read a brief statement for you all.
International, International Day of the Girl Child is an international observance day declared by the United Nations. Nations every October for the past thirteen years. Observant observe observation supports more opportunities for girls and increases aware awareness of gender inequality faced by girls worldwide. International Day of the Girl helps give girls a voice and teaches them that girls can do anything that they can that put their mind to it.
From all the support of our community through cookie sa- cookie and candy sales, our Moses Lake Girl Scouts are learning and growing in many different areas. The girls are building courage, confidence, and character. Just recently, the Girl Scouts went on a camping trip. That particular camping trip gave the Girl Scouts an educational experience to learn where our electricity comes from and how electric dams operate. It also helps them to know why reducing, reusing, and recycling is so important in our community with learning about our water rights.
Other Moses Lake Girl Scouts learned about the local Indian tribes around our state and especially who our city was named after. By building confidence, our local Girl Scouts got to try rock climbing up cliffs to develop their mindset of accomplishment. We are thankful and grateful for all the local help from our city and community members during our fundraiser sales, field trips, and service opportunities. We appreciate all those things that our community members volunteer to help our Girl Scouts grow in wealth of knowledge and empowerment.
Thank you to our city council and locally leaders for giving us this opportunity. We would like to thank you by giving each person in attendance a box of Girl Scout cookies as a show of our appreciation.
I mean, you know, there are some.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Swartz. All council are present.
Thank you, Tamara. Okay, this evening, we have a group of Moses Lake Girl Scouts that I would like to recognize in honor of the International Day of the Girl, which occurs every year on October 11th, and to recognize empowerment of these young ladies to dream big and reach their full potential for human rights. First up this evening from the Girl Scouts, we have Ms. Audrey Bellamy to do our pledge of allegiance. So Audrey, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, all stand and follow Audrey.
Me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Audrey's gonna hang out, and we also have a few other members of Girl Scouts here this evening, including Beatrix Owens, Amelia Donaldson, and they were going to read a brief statement for you all.
International International Day of the Girl Child is an international observance day declared by the United Nations every October for the past thirteen years. Observant observe observation supports more opportunities for girls and increases aware awareness of gender inequality faced by Girls Worldwide. International Day of the Girl helps give girls a voice and teaches them that girls can do anything that they can that put their mind to it.
From all the support of our community through cookie sa- cookie and candy sales, our Moses Lake Girl Scouts are learning and growing in many different areas. The girls are building courage, confidence, and character. Just recently, the Girl Scouts went on a camping trip. That particular camping trip gave the Girl Scouts an educational experience to learn where our electricity comes from and how electric dams operate. It also helps them to know why reducing, reusing, and recycling is so important in our community with learning about our water rights.
Other Moses Lake Girl Scouts learned about the local Indian tribes around our state and especially who our city was named after. By building confidence, our local Girl Scouts got to try rock climbing up cliffs to develop their mindset of accomplishment. We are thankful and grateful for all the local help from our city and community members during our fundraiser sales, field trips, and service opportunities. We appreciate all those things that our community members volunteer to help our Girl Scouts grow in wealth of knowledge and empowerment.
Thank you to our city council and locally leaders for giving us this opportunity. We would like to thank you by giving each person in attendance a box of Girl Scout cookies as a show of our appreciation.
I mean, you know, there are some. Well, thank you so much. I think that's the first time we've ever had a cookie handout at a city council meeting, so don't be surprised if participation at the council meetings is up next week. Thank you, ladies, and congratulations on all your accomplishments this year. All right, we'll jump right into it with the approval of the agenda. Does any council member wish to move any item? Any items to a business item for individual discussion and vote? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented.
Jake, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm on.
Huh?
What's your question?
Oh, are you good?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. All right, first up, I've got a couple of proclamations here. The first is for Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native Americans have inhabited the area known as Washington State since time immemorial, and today twenty-nine federally recognized Native American tribes, out-of-state tribes with treaty reserved rights, and other tribal communities reside in Washington. And whereas members and descendants of tribes around the United States and First Nations of Canada also reside in the state of Washington. And whereas Native American contributions and values have shaped the social, political, environmental, and economic fabric of the state, while also enhancing freedom, prosperity, and cultural diversity. And whereas in accordance with state law, RCW forty-three point three seven six, which directs the governor and state agencies to establish government-to-government relationships with Native American tribes to enhance and formalize working relationships with the tribes throughout collaboration and consultation. And whereas the state of Washington has designed the Friday immediately following the Fourth Thursday in November as a state legal and school holiday known as Native American Heritage Day. And whereas the city of Moses Lake, Washington, joins other cities and states across the nation in celebrating Native American Heritage Month, honoring the unique heritage of this continent's first people and reaffirming the commitment to respect each tribe's sovereignty and cultural identity. Now, therefore, the Moses Lake City Council do hereby proclaim November twenty-two-five as Native American Heritage Month and November twenty-eight, twenty-two-five as Native American Heritage Day in Moses Lake, and encourage all people to join in this special observance. And here to receive this proclamation this evening are Karen Condon and Jared Erickson, both of the Confederated Tribes. So if you would like to come up and receive this.
Go ahead, Jared.
A little bit taller than the Girl Scouts. Why has the halt in Chase, Queens, we saw, we, hello, good day, my name's Jared Michael Erickson, I'm the chairman for the tribe, and also back home, we have four districts on a reservation, how we're elected, and I represent the Nesbitt district. A little background on our tribes, just kind of a history lesson. We're twelve Confederated Tribes into one tribe now, so when you talk about the twenty-nine federally recognized tribes, there's other tribes that also, like Spokane, it's upper, lower, middle. Yakewa Nation has fourteen different tribes. We have twelve that we, the Sinca use Moses Columbia, Half Sun, there's a lot of different ways that we're referred to as are one of those tribes which make up the area that we live in today, which is what Moses Lake is named after, after Chief Moses and his dad before him as well. Chief Moses took on his dad's name after he passed and one little history fact is Moses Lake is where they used to collect duck eggs, him and his, him and his family, Chief Moses, they used to collect duck eggs along that, so they'd harvest them, so our traditional territory is about thirty-nine million acres between all of our tribes, so we are also recognized as a Aboriginal peoples of Canada for our Snikes people up in Canada, so we now have rights up in Canada. Our nest purse go into Willawa, Northeast Oregon, and then also our pluse go into Idaho, so we're in three states and two countries, so there's a lot of work we do, and my job and our jobs entail a lot of trips to Olympia, trips to Vancouver, B.C., trips to Ottawa, trips to D.C., so we're very, very active and busy. We'd like to be, you know, more active in the Moses Lake area. We are, some just depends on what's going on, so we do appreciate the invite down here to end the proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month and Moses Columbia, their territory was about four point three million acres of our thirty-nine million acres that we encompass for all of our twelve tribes, and they Chief Moses fought for a long time to make sure that this area was where his reservation was established, but this area was a lot of the area the settlers were coming in, moving into. And so what happened is they end up having the Moses Columbia Reservation, which has never been disestablished, it's still part of our reservation actually now. We have a court case established, and that goes from the north end of Lake Shland to the Canadian border and borders on the east on the Okanagan River, and then essentially the Cascade Crest is how that reservation, so with a big area cover, which ironically, he wasn't from that area, that was where Inyette, Shalan, Okanagan met how people were from, but they're kind of forced there, and Chief Moses never actually did leave his traditional territory, he never left here, he actually will live on that reservation until he was forced to move to the Colville Reservation where we currently reside. So just kind of some background and history, and I know we've talked with, talked with one of the councilmen, trying to work on some sculpture art we're talking about potentially, some things we can do within the area to kind of reestablish that history and so my dad's non-trivial, so just as a little history for myself, I come, my grandparents are come from the Othello area, so I grew up swimming in the canals and the and the Othello area, so really close to here, and I had family that lived here, family lives in the tri-city, so I have family that's all over, not just on the reservation, but down here in this area as well, so I have a connection on both sides of my family to this area, so been here a lot, and I always still come here to shop once in a while, if it's not here, it's Omack, but I don't want to bore you guys any longer with history, but just kind of a little background for those who don't know, thank you for your time, and I'll let Karen speak.
Why has Ha Ha and Chase, Queens, Tasskeen, my name is Karen Condon, and I represent the Omack District. So the four districts, Omack is in the Omack area, Nesbilum, which is where Jared represents that district, then there's the Keller District, which is a little further east, and then the Intulum is on the furthest side of the reservation. And so I come from Omack, and we're the largest district on the reservation, so there are four elected officials from Omack, there are four in Nesbilum, two in Keller, and four in Intulum. So fourteen council, every year, seven are up for reelection, we only have two-year terms. So it makes it quite difficult, and I don't know how long your terms are, so they're probably four, right? Yeah. We wish we could be at four, but, but, you know, it's up to the voters, right? But anyway, we're very grateful to have been invited today to receive the proclamation, and we're really fortunate to have a good working relationship with the Moses Lake community, you know, I really want to thank all of you for being here tonight, Limlim, for being here, and I do have a nominal gift, a small gift for each of the council members and your city administrator? Manager, sorry, Rob, I remember his name is Rob, so I'd like to hand these out if I can. Again, Limlim.
Thank you very much. Make sure you get your gas down over at Half Sun Gas. Just kidding, but if there's any issues you guys ever have, or heard some traffic issues, I don't know if there still are those or anything going on, please let us know, reach out, we want to be good neighbors and make sure if there's any issues with traffic or anything going on down there, please let us know, we'll try to address that the best we can, so I think we're gonna be putting more pumps in, hopefully so we get more people through, so anyways, thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one other proclamation this evening, and this one is for Veterans Day. Whereas since the founding of our nation, courageous men and women have stepped forward to serve in the United States Armed Forces, defending the principles of freedom, democracy, and justice, and whereas Veterans Day observed each year on November eleventh as a time to honor and recognize all who have served our country in war and peace, and to express our profound gratitude for their sacrifice and service. And whereas the citizens of Moses Lake join to remember that our freedom has been preserved through the dedication and bravery of those who wore the uniform of Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and National Guard. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we acknowledge the contributions of our veterans, their families, and all those currently serving in uniform who continue to protect the ideals that make our nation strong. And whereas the city of Moses Lake encourages all residents to take this day to recognize, honor, and thank our veterans for their service and their unwavering commitment to our country. Now, therefore, I Dustin Swartz, Mayor of Moses Lake, Washington, do hereby proclaim November eleven, twenty-two-five as Veterans Day. And if I could please at this time have all the veterans in attendance stand up and be recognized.
And, Your Honor, I'd like to point out that the folks that just stood up are actually city employees.
That's right.
So it's pretty cool to have them here tonight and be able to recognize them.
All right, well, I will go ahead and give this to Rob on all of your behalf, so thank you again for your service. Okay, moving on. We have citizen communications, and I do not believe we received any this evening, which is also a rarity. Bring cookies more often. I'm kidding. Okay, then we will move on to a public hearing, which is item number one, the comprehensive plan docket amendment presented this evening by our acting community development director, Vivian Ramsey. Vivian?
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, a few meetings ago, we had presented the Development Regulation Docket to you for twenty-two-five, and that meeting went on for a bit, so we mis-presenting the comprehensive plan requested amendments from the planning commission. So here we are, and staff added one, so that's what required the public hearing, because the planning commission had held the public hearing on the items that they recommended. So first, we want to amend the utilities chapter to add references to the wastewater plan that the city has adopted and the water plan that's in the approval process. And we want to remove the requirements in the COOP plan for connections to sewer and water in in the UGA, because we do not have jurisdiction in the UGA. And the planning commission had asked that we review or amend the future streets map. Staff is asking that we hold off on that until we have the more information from our twenty-two-seven docket amendment. I mean, yeah, complete amendment, and we will have more data to go on to use to amend the future streets map. The one that we've added is a request to amend the future land use map, and along with the zoning designation to industrial for the property that was the former sleep center. So it would be a land use designation of industrial and zoning designation of light industrial, and those are it.
Thank you for that, Vivian.
I think he didn't get a chance to sign up, but I think there's a member of the public here that would like to speak on this.
All right, I guess I'll go ahead and open the hearing. Is there a member of the, yes, go ahead. Who would please state your name and city of residence for the record?
Yes, so my name is Dominique Benham. I live in Moses Lake, Washington, in the McConaughey area. Originally, I lived like eight years in the May Valley area. I am the owner of Envious Lawn Care and Landscaping here in Moses Lake, located right on Broadway, little tiny building. But what we're trying to do is the old sleep center, we are trying to get it to where it would be light industrial, so we can move over there legally and rightfully and follow all the rules. And, um, because where we're at, it's just too small, it's way too small, and we can't have trucks, I guess, and trailers and like that at the lot without it being switched. So my goal here today was, this is my first time ever doing this, so I'm a little nervous, but my goal here today is to just give a little bit of background about what we do, it's lawn care and landscaping. And we're looking to not just move there for that, but also expand our services that we offer through the retail side, such as landscape material, because we have noticed since twenty-two-one to now, each year, it is, the material is becoming very, very expensive. And so I came up with this crazy plan one night laying in bed that if I in-house it, I can drop it significantly and also supply it to the public at massive fraction of the cost. And with the water shortage problem, a lot of people are going to drought-resistant landscape, like a lot, and it's requiring way more demand for these products, and they're just, they're not going down. They're actually getting way more expensive, and it's causing a real issue. I mean, if you drive through Moses Lake from two years ago to now, like, a lot of yards are dead, and they're just ugly. And the people are doing the best they can, you know, so our goal is to essentially move there, expand from there. And uh and just serve the public as best we can and also hire more people, um of course. And uh just stay in Moses and keep everything local and um and just help out as best we can. So that's that's our goal and that's all I got, my name's Dominique Benham.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Any other public testimony this evening? If not, I will go ahead and close the hearing. Mr. Fancher.
Question for for probably Vivian, so it's currently zoned commercial, correct?
Yes.
And 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 so the the reason he can't do what he wants is obviously doesn't fit in the commercial zone, but what are the what are what isn't allowed in that?
His uh he wants to establish a contractor's yard.
Okay.
Which isn't permitted in the commercial zones.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm fine, yeah, okay.
To clarify, he wants to have, as he explained, building materials or landscaping materials, a yard, right?
And trucks and.
So just out of curiosity, uh sorry to jump in, but now I'm thinking of something else. They're behind uh the old Big Lots, what is that zoned as, do you know?
I believe it's commercial.
Okay. Okay.
And that's why I guess I'm I'm confused a little bit on on, we have lots of.
We have a lot of nonconforming uses throughout the city.
Okay, well, yeah, I didn't, yeah, that wasn't my aim, point that out explicitly, but yes, okay, thank you.
We're not alone in that.
Okay, but the question here is the rezon specifically correct?
Uh the land use designation change.
Okay.
And the rezon and the other items on the docket.
Could that be conditional? That that if the landscape left, which I don't have any problem with landscape there, but if that's changing into industrial, could that be a a more of an industrial kind of thing go in there? I mean, if that if that would that be in keeping with the adjacent property? I mean, I I think a landscape business is pretty innocuous. But I wouldn't want to see a tank farm go in there.
It's a light industrial.
Light industrial, okay, all right.
If my memory serves me correctly, I think this all was light industrial at one time. I know that I know the north side was for quite a while.
The north side are uh all for, the other three corners of that intersection are industrial. The two across the highway are heavy industrial.
Which is wrong, but.
We're working on.
I know.
So is this gateway commercial as of today?
Yes.
That's right, so this was part of the 2021 COM Plan Amendment.
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is something we've identified as an interesting area, right? You have irrigation contractors there that have yards also.
Yep.
So, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it's an area we intend to look at through the 2027 update, but this situation arose. And we thought maybe we could uh further at least that area.
And the, there are still landscaping requirements in light industrial, is that right?
Yeah.
Or, okay.
I'll bet that will be the best landscape industrial in the cities.
Well, yeah, I don't disagree with that, yeah. I'm just asking, I mean, because again, it's, you know, when I think of industrial, that's the industrial area that doesn't have any sidewalks or any of that sort of thing, so this is a little bit of a in between, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I I just struggle with, like I say, oh, it's not this property, it's thinking of all the other properties.
I agree. Um and it's light industrial across the highway.
No, 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 well, it's actually heavy industrials, that's part of the problem too, that's a problem for the area too, for certain uses that you might want to see there. But but the, I remember when we talked about this in 21, um well, I was on the other side of the dais then, but talking about um by creating new zones for some of these properties um from the the ability for them to own it and finance it. Um when you change to a nonconforming use, you create a major problem of theirs when they, commercial financing isn't an unlimited, you usually got to renew every five years. And the bank can all of a sudden say, you got a nonconforming use, I'm not going to loan you the money anymore. And so I hate to, I I love your project, that's not what we're talking about here. I I think it's a great area for what you're talking about doing, because it's easy to get in and out and and display. But I'm, I don't want to jump, I'm a little afraid to jump in the gun without thinking, and and is this just specific to these two parcels?
Yes. So in approving the docket, you're not approving um the change in the land use designation zone, you're proving, putting resources to it so that the staff and planning commission can uh put it through the public process.
Fair enough.
With that in mind.
You can answer my concerns.
Yeah. I'll ask, I mean, we're, we have a COM Plan update coming in 2027, correct?
Correct.
So there we probably should put a placeholder here, is this is something we we would want to discuss further to to Mark's point, is there's other issues there?
Yes, definitely, it's already on the list.
Right.
Where where does that?
Where does that leave Dominic's project?
This is part of the docket, he just, we got, I got lost in meetings too.
Yeah, where we are in the process, right, this is just to get added to the COM Plan Amendment docket, sir.
Okay.
In addition to those other changes Vivian had indicated. Which again is just the future streets plan and.
Is there any more discussion? If not, I would make
Use designations.
I would make a motion to um approve the comprehensive plan docket amendment as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we have the consent agenda, and I do understand, I apologize, we're not catching this before, but we would like one item.
Yeah.
Discuss separately. Which is item.
Item D.
Item D.
As in David.
Do we have to get consent of council to pull that? Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead and take care of the remaining items, which is items A through C and E through F.
Make a motion to approve the consented, or to, excuse me, to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item D. D as in dog.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda less item D, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the consent. Now we will consider item D, which I believe Mr. Lombardi had a question on.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. City manager Carlinsy, I'm not sure if if you know uh on this. During the uh meeting that we had with the school board, which was a really good meeting, I might add, and I was a big proponent of the school resource officer, I just had a question on this interlocal agreement, because we never got a copy of it. Um and then when I did see it, it used the phrase provide funding. Um and I just wanted to declare, I just wanted some clarification, what that exactly means? Does that mean full funding or partial or it was predate?
Yeah, I passed that question on to our chief and I've um got the answer back later this afternoon, but chief, do you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, and if if I remember the email, were you talking specifically about the uh in the absence of an SRO? That they were talking about providing funding to fill in the position?
I believe it was in the initial paragraphs about school board providing funding, so in other words, they're reimbursing, right?
Yes, everything is uh reimbursed, including if they have fill-in SRO.
Okay, so the way it was worded, it it wasn't very clear, it just said provide funding, so I didn't know if that meant partial, they'll provide partial funding or 100% funding?
No, they provide 100% funding for any time that the SROs in the school.
Okay.
So, and including if there's a uh a fill-in SRO, which was kind of common last year. I said we're at three last year, so it was pretty common to have a fill-in and they would pay for it.
Okay, because I remember, I think last year there was some conversation about partial funding, so that's why I wanted to just clarify that.
Yeah, and I think that did come about, I think during the budget uh talks in the crunch they were doing, but at the end, um it still works out to the same. Um I I think it works out to somewhere in the neighborhood of like 6633, um because we get them for part of the year as well, as far as percentages go.
So but
For the whole year.
But for now, this, under this new one, it's 100%.
For the time they're in schools, and it's always been that we pay when they're not in the schools. So during the summer months and the breaks, they are not coded as a school resource officers on their pay. Which has been since uh since, gosh, we started the program uh back in the early 2000s, it's been now.
Okay, thank you.
And then, sorry, when you said fill-in, can you describe that a little bit?
Yeah, so uh especially last year when we were down uh an SRO, not because of the budget pieces, because it took a long time to backfill a position and train, um and get that officer on the road, so then ultimately we filled that position this year. Uh but we're down to three, well, we have certain training requirements, um we have one of the uh SROs is on the tactical team, and so there would be times that they um would be short. And so um the school district would pay to have, uh we have a couple of former SROs that have the training that we talked about at that, uh the meeting last week. Um and then the sergeant for the school resource officers, who's admin sergeant, but he covers the school resource officers, can actually cover in the schools as well, and so they would pay, and at times, excuse me, at times the uh SRO that was off, because they work nine hour shifts. So every other week is a uh three day weekend for them, that they could come back in uh and work that as well. And the city would, or excuse me, the uh schools would pay for it.
Okay, thank you, yes, Victor.
Um so on that one third that they're not technically an SRO, what do they do?
They work patrol shifts.
Okay.
So uh for example, the summer they were out, um each assigned to a different shift, so they bolstered the manpower on the the road. Uh there are times that they'll take, like during the school breaks, where they may take, also take a break, but in which case they're using vacation that otherwise the city would be paying for that time that they'd be off, if that makes sense, so if they're not going to work the road uh during those breaks, they can take vacation, that would technically be the city time uh that gets paid.
Okay, so Madeline, um in the budget for the police department then, is that one third already in the budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And you know, uh Chief Sands, is there, I'm assuming that this relationship is um formalized in state law, is that accurate?
In insofar as.
I mean, well, you're you described, for instance, these officers need specific training
Yes, okay.
This role, right, to
Yes.
To have officers in school, so my question actually is, is there funding that the state provides or makes available to school districts to help fund these positions?
I don't believe so, but I can say though with 100% certainty, I do know that the um the levy was the the key issue, and I think their their positions are actually provided for in that levy.
In the levy?
Yeah, don't, don't, yeah, I'm not 100%, I'm I'm hovering around 75% to 80% on that, though.
Okay. Great.
I think he's, I think he's correct on that, on the levy part.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, I think it should be something we look into, but somebody should. All right, does that satisfy your question, Mr. Lombardi?
Yeah, we can move forward on that from my standpoint.
Okay, did you want to make a motion?
Sure, I make a motion that we approve uh the MLSD School Resource Officer Interlocal Agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Right, old business this evening, item number three, which is the water reservoir 10 sizing. And here to present this evening is Brian Valtz, and I'm assuming Mr. Law is going to help you with this?
That is correct, our city engineer, Richard Law, is going to present this.
Thank you, Richard.
And if I could, if I could uh just do a little intro, um so we're in the process of negotiating some utility service agreements and development agreements with Moses Point and Paradise Point. And one of the things we need to know is what their contribution should be towards a future reservoir out there. Um and in order to know that, we need to get direction from you all on what the size of the reservoir is. And you may say, oh, well, isn't that a, isn't that a technical thing that engineers should figure out? Partially, yes, but there is a policy part to this question. And that is, um how much growth are you willing to be comfortable with out in that area? And should you be planning for and building us and sizing the tank for? And not only growth, but also, um what should you assume as far as average water usage per per home or per ERU? Is the city going to be really strict about um new development, finding their own irrigation out there, and if that, if we are, then can we assume a lower ERU per household? And if that's true, then could we assume a lower tank size, because there will be less water usage? So we need your direction on that, so that I can know what to put in the development agreements with Moses Point and Paradise Point. So with that as background, I can turn it over to Richard to go through some slides.
Okay, and I gave everybody a a copy um and a a diagram that we'll be going over tonight really quick. So again, appreciate your time. And talking about reservoir sizing, um there are, like as uh Rob was saying, there are some things that we need to assumptions that um go into the sizing of these tanks that uh we would like some direction on. Um so some of the considerations, um just a little bit of background, as far as when we're building this tank out there, the long term in our water si- proposed water system plan and and the long term goal for the May Valley area um is to um establish it as its own standalone water pressure zone. Currently, the portion um around the uh the country club and and the portions that are in the city limits there are actually uh part of the central zone, and they are tied across the lake on the water line hanging on the bridge and is dependent upon the the storage reservoirs on that side of uh on the peninsula. Which um for a, an emergency uh standpoint, uh if something were to go wrong on the bridge, all of those people would be out of service. And so we would like to establish um the Moses, uh the May Valley area um as its own zone with its own reservoir and utilize the wells on the west side of the lake to provide a service for that. So we have to account not only for the future growth in that area, but the existing services that are all. So we have to account not only for the future growth in that area, but the existing services that are already there. And currently there's about 1,300 services on the west side of the lake. And they use currently an average of about 562 gallons a day. That's that's our citywide average. And that basically are those, we account for not only in-home use, but for irrigation use in that average. We did a when we were looking at this, we were looking at what could May Valley become? And the number of homes based on current vacant lands in that corridor that could possibly develop. And we came up with a number, if it all developed as densely as it could under current zonings, that you could end up with close to 10,000 homes west of the lake in that May Valley area. Which is, that's about 80% of the current population of Moses Lake. I mean, it could get very large. And so some of the questions are, how how big do we want to make it? How much growth do? How many years of growth do we want to account for in this? In building this reservoir? When you build a tank, these these beautiful steel tanks that we have here, they're they last a long, long time. You keep it painted, you keep it coated on the inside, they'll last 100 years, easy. We have several tanks in that are well over 50 years in use right now, and they're in good shape. We just did a reservoir inspection of all of our tanks, and they're all in good shape. They can, they'll last decades more. So you know, to to build a tank, you know, the lifespan is is going to be 50 years plus. So so what do you want to account for in the sizing of this tank? So we we ran a couple of scenarios. One would be if we can plan for six, essentially 6,000 units on the west side of the lake. So that's an additional 4,700. Which if you're thinking that that's going to grow 150 units a year-ish, that's about, that's approximately 30 years of growth on the west side of the lake. If you, or we could say, let's plan on 4,500 units utilizing this tank. That would, that would accommodate about 100 units a year west of the lake for 30 years. Before that tank would be, we would need to add more storage essentially on the west side of the lake. And just for background, we looked at the last four years in in May Valley. And it seems like it's grown pretty fast over there. And it's been about 60 units a year on the west side of the lake, which which equates to about one-fifth of the connections, new connections that we add in Moses Lake in all of Moses Lake. We average about three, between 250 and 300 units a year. So that that is good growth and and we can even so, so that's, I guess, the first question we'd like you to consider is, you know, how many, how many units, how many homes do we think we want to to bake into this, this reservoir sizing? How many years worth of growth? Understanding that the tank's going to last decades and decades. So that's the first question. The next question, and as we're developing these scenarios are, how do we want to plan for essentially the average day demand and the peak hour demand that that we're going to be seeing out there? If we're going to serve them like everybody else within the city of Moses Lake, where they have the opportunity to not only use in-home use, but external for irrigation purposes, then we would be looking at using this, the same use pattern that we have for everybody else would be that, you know, be around five, over 500 gallons a day, average day use. And like Rob was saying, the other scenario we could look at is is we can plan for requiring developments on that side of the lake to provide their own irrigation. And then you could plan for a smaller average day use on that side of the lake, which will drive the sizing to some degree. So that's, that's the other question that we would like to to get your input on is, is what are we going to plan for on that scenario? So we looked at some scenarios here. One would be planning for 6,000 units and everybody's on irrigation. So that's scenario one. Okay, so we have 6,000 units and everybody's using 500 plus gallons a day. Scenario two would be, let's plan for 6,000 units. And we know we have 1,300 existing that use irrigation, so we have to account for them. And then of the 4,700 new connections, half of them would be on irrigation. Our air would irrigate with city water and half would be required to irrigate with their own irrigation system, provided they can, they can find it, they can fund it, they can get legal access to it. So that's scenario two. Scenario three would be, and four would be similar, but we would be planning for 4,500 total units versus the 6,000 total units. Have I lost anybody yet? Are we, we, okay, all right, we'll just keep going on here.
Hey, Richard, can you go back to that previous slide for a second? Okay, and even go back to the previous slide.
Okay.
Okay, so under, under the scenario two of of what we can assume an average daily usage. You see the 50/50 split there, you see, we're assuming that 50% would be using 562 and the other 50% would be at 200 gallons per day. That's a conservative scenario on staff's part. So we actually think that a strong majority of new development in May Valley will be at 200 gallons a day if we hold strong on this policy of them finding their own irrigation sources. So that scenario is still kind of conservative on our part. If you want to be less conservative, you can certainly certainly direct us to that. You can create a third scenario if you want.
Thank you. Councilmember Scog, did you have a question?
Yeah, about 50% of the new connections at 562, are those, were those potential connections that are already in the city limits?
So it would be a combination of what's left within the city limits as it continues to develop and possible new annexations or or connections that would, that council allows within the urban growth area.
So it could easily, not about easily, but it could quite possibly be a 75/25 split where 75% are at the 200 gallons.
If if council requires, depending on if it's a code change or if it's being through developer agreements with properties within the urban growth area, it it could be different. We're just, again, I'm an engineer, I like safety factors. And so this, when we were going through this, that's, this is kind of the proposal that kind of makes me less nervous. What what makes me a little nervous, just being candid here, is that this council is very strong on wanting to require future developments out there to provide their own irrigation. But we're planning for 30, 40 years. Will that opinion? Could that opinion change? And then, and then people, newer developments would then come in and and future council would say, sure, you can have irrigation water. So it's just being, you know, things that would make me a little nervous as an engineer proposing. As we get a little further and and we start talking about how you calculate storage, you'll see here that that the average daily use drives the size less than other things. So it it will make a difference, but it won't make a massive difference in the size of the tank. Even if you were to say that 100% of them will all only use 200 gallons per day. So just, we'll, we'll get to that, but but it is still something to consider.
Okay, Councilmember Fancher?
I think in all the garb here, I think the question's got answered, and I was with you. Councilmember Scog, because I was going to ask how many, you you took all the time to to figure out how many units we can build out there. How many units are left if at maximum in the current city limits? I mean, that's the question, because because we've, we've been pretty straightforward to say that anything that's in the UGA right now has to create their own irrigation system. The only water they're getting is for for potable, for drinking water inside the house. So the question still hasn't been answered. You you did the math for, to figure out how to get all these connections and what you think May Valley is going to go. How much is in the limits of the city, the boundaries set? How many more developable acres at highest density is units?
There, there, in current city limits, west of the lake, there's not much left.
Okay, that's, and that's, but that's where we're going back and and even with Rob on, and we can be more aggressive because I, where where we're going with this is is a separate irrigation system, not just in May Valley. We're, we're, we're working on all of that for large parcels for parks and different things like that to look for a different system. So I don't think we want to go down the rabbit hole of creating separate potable water irrigation systems where we have available irrigation water. So, so I I just think that we keep packaging these thing up time and time again. You know, at 562, and I haven't heard anybody on the council that is in favor of that. You know, wanting to wanting to create irrigation water or good potable water. So anyway, I I think we got it because it's got you're on the same boat where I was trying to figure out what what do we have left in the city? Right, because I agree, if it's already in the city limits and there's a lot or two out there, it's pretty hard to make them punch their own well in and or figure out irrigation water. But but all of the UGA, I mean, it's even in our ETA policy. Correct? So anyway, that's, that's where I'm at with it. And and so, and while, while, yes, I agree that there's lots of other factors of trying to get to the to the number and the size, but every million dollars is a lot of money.
Do you believe that most of the property in the UGA in May Valley has access to other sources of water for irrigation?
So here's what I believe, and it's a mistake that this community made many years ago, and it is, it's the past, I don't care. We had those opportunities a long time ago. No different than the, if you think about what Kennewick's done and Paso has done over the years, having the separate utilities, we didn't do it. It's the, it's past. But we have this new area in May Valley that has lake water that, yes, it's going to have to, they're going to have to put some thought process in how to, how to create that utility and or easement and or right away to get out of the lake or some of their, some of their avenue of irrigation water, which could be a shallow irrigation well. And while, while we keep talking about it, I will tell you that there are people out there. If we set the the box up to play in, I think they can figure out how to play in the box, meaning if I got to provide my own irrigation water, or maybe I do a different kind of development that doesn't need a lot of irrigation water. Which I think you already are seeing with some of the new developments. You're starting to finally see people look for alternative sources of landscaping. So I, I just think that we have to be mindful on all of this, not only while, while, you know, just looking at the numbers, it's you know, every million is a lot of money and and you spread that over the cost to everybody. It seems like a small number. It's not. You keep adding these costs on the, on the new developments and stuff. But I do, I do think that we have a unique opportunity in May Valley to do something that we could have done in Moses Lake years and years ago with the, either the lake or the canal system that was here, that a lot of, you know, canals got taken out. And, you know, if we, if we'd have been thinking we were if we could have had a better crystal ball back then. So I just think we have a pretty unique opportunity there. That's where I'm.
Thank you, Mark. Councilmember Madewa?
So in talking about this and kind of listening to what everyone is saying, how come we aren't talking about the Purple Pipe for some of the area instead of just looking at the connection, maybe 562 gallons? Why aren't we looking at Purple Pipe?
So the, one of the biggest things that we, we, we've talked about as staff and all of this, a couple of things. One is we do not have statutory authority to run an irrigation district. That is MLIRD. So for the city, if MLIRD wants to run Purple Pipe, they have the legal right to do so. The city of Moses Lake, we don't have an irrigation utility. And so to, to, to put in dry Purple Pipe in our subdivisions and developments when nobody is running a, a, an irrigation utility is just wasted money.
I understand that, but we continue to talk about pulling water from the lake if possible or whatever. And so I think my opinion is that we need to look at alternatives, Purple Pipe or whatever. Instead of thinking of a well that will be tall enough to handle, big enough to handle X amount of people in the next 30 years. So I think that's my opinion.
Councilmember Scott?
The MLIRD taxing district of of what's in the city, I mean, people with buildings and 100% asphalt don't get any of that water yet, do pay a tax rate for that. It seems to me that they've already got the authority and the people who are in the district are already paying for it. So I mean, I can't, to Judy's point, I think we need to get the, get the irrigation district to, to do what people already pay for.
That, I, I would support that. Okay, but again, it's, yeah, that's, that's not as far as us trying to to size, well, it, yes and no, but as far as get, yeah, how do we get, how do we get an area, a functioning irrigation district for the citizens of Moses? Like, I don't know, I don't know how you get there from here. Without, it's lots and lots and lots of money.
Are we having a conversation with them about it at all?
Oh, I've, they, I've had several conversations with Sam Castro and others and and, you know, it boils down to who, who has the money to put in a, a parallel system now? Nobody does. I, I how, with the, with the taxes that they currently get, they, they can't afford it. And certainly we don't, unless we, unless the city of Moses Lake and the citizens wanted to prop up a completely new utility. And then we somehow partner with the irrigation district to to use their water right out of the lake and and create this parallel network, which would cost I don't know, 100 mil, hundreds of millions of dollars to run you know, new lines throughout the whole city. I, I, I don't know how you'd get there.
But I mean, the, the right to that water is already being paid for by the citizens in the irrigation district.
To, to the MLIRD, correct.
So we already pay for that, right? Everybody in the district, right? So if there was a practical way to get the water from the lake into my yard, I've already, I get, I have the right to that water.
Right, so for the purposes of this discussion, which is specifically the reservoir in May Valley. And and to City Manager Carl Lindsay's point earlier, you know, that some of this is a policy decision. And I understood what he was suggesting there, that basically what any decision we make on this ultimately has, as Councilmember Fancher pointed out, a material effect on the cost of home, right? Which, for at least a few of us up here, I believe, affordable housing is a priority. So those are things we all have to keep in mind. But the other question I think that where Richard's going with this is asking you know, how big we want to make this thing and what the anticipated growth is and what our watering practices here in general are and all of that in the future. So where this is germane to the conversation is what our belief is. As far as what we're doing to solve the problem, do we think in the next 20 years, there will be more and better water sources available to any people in Moses?
sources available to any people in Moses Lake? If so, then I would say we could probably make this a little on the smaller side. But I don't think we've heard the whole story yet because as Richard alluded to, it's not a simple ratio of one to one here that your users dictate the exact size. So there's other considerations. Correct. Okay. So so we talked about the scenarios. So I'm gonna, I gave you guys bigger copies of this. So this is so in a water tank, there are five storage components that you have to account for when you size a water tank. Okay, the very first one is what we call dead storage. And what dead storage means is you have to, you have to have, you have to lift the water a minimum amount to where it's useful. Okay, by state law, you must anything under a twenty PSI level, twenty pounds per square inch level in your tank to the highest service elevation is considered unusable storage. Okay. And so if you've got like Tank One, the one up above Safeway, that's our shortest tank. Just little stubby tanks like, well, how can that one be so short and all the rest of them are so tall? It's because that one serves everything down around Safeway. So the hill creates the the pressure and you don't have the dead storage. Out at Moses Point, we're going to be serving houses that are approximately the same level as as the bottom of the tank and even a little bit higher. There's there's about another five feet that we have to account for for people out in that area. And so the bottom fifty-one feet of that tank is dead storage. You've seen the golf ball on a tee versions. You've seen, you know, the the ball with the legs. Those are all designed to lift that storage up before it and create the usable storage way up high. It's actually less expensive to build the the shells like we do here than it is to build those other fancier styles for the the amount of water that we want to store. So we're still using it, but that bottom fifty-one feet basically is is dead storage. Nothing we do, we can make that, we can make it skinnier, but we can't make it shorter. The top of the tank, the hundred and forty feet, that is also fixed based on, again, what pressures we want to deliver to the zone. At a hundred and forty feet, we we deliver approximately sixty PSI to the highest homes, which is about where you want to be. So the very bottom is fixed, the very top, that's called operational storage. So that's like the bladder tanks in your house. If you have, if you're familiar with a well, if you have a well, basically, that's the zone where you use it, it comes down a little bit, and then the wells kick on and they fill it up because you want your wells to run for hours, not minutes. It's really hard on them if they they turn on and off real fast. So the rule of thumb is that's ten percent of your usable height. Okay, so our usable height from fifty-one feet to a hundred and forty feet, that's about ninety feet. So the nine, the top nine feet, that's your operational storage. So that middle eighty feet, if you look at that, that's referred to as the effective volume. That's where we're doing our calculation. Okay. And that's made up of three things. One is fire suppression storage. Okay, that is determined by the fire authority. We go to them, we say, based on the zoning and the uses out there, how many gallons a minute do we need and for how long? And so when we went to the to the fire marshal, he told us we needed twenty-seven hundred and fifty gallons a minute for four hours. That's six hundred and sixty thousand gallons. That is the number. It doesn't matter how much or how little they use for irrigation. That's the number for fire. That's for that. The next one is called standby storage. That's also emergency storage. And that number is determined by a couple of different factors. How much source do you have? How many wells do you have? How many gallons a minute can they run? And if you have enough storage or, excuse me, enough source, that number can start coming way down. But there is a bottom a number established by Department of Health for standby storage. You must account for or you must have on hand a minimum of two hundred gallons per connection in standby storage. So if all your wells go down, if all the power goes out, you've got a minimum amount of water that you can keep people in water for a day or so. And so if you've got, if you're accounting for six thousand homes times two hundred gallons, that's one point two million gallons. That's the biggest number that we deal with. And it doesn't matter if they're use, if if they're using less average gallons per day all the way down to two hundred, we still have to have two hundred gallons per home in the tank. And that's that's the biggest number we account for. Now you can net, what they call you can nest those two emergency volumes together. So one dictates. So right now, we only have thirteen hundred homes on the system, right? And so the standby storage requirement is very small, but we still have to have six hundred and sixty thousand gallons of fire storage. So that number dictates, but once we get to a certain number of homes, then the standby storage gets bigger than the fire storage. Okay. And so so if we're, if we're saying that we want to plan for six thousand homes, we need one point two million gallons in that bucket. If we're saying that we're going to plan for forty-five hundred homes, we need nine hundred thousand gallons in that bucket. So that can make a big difference in the size of the tank. So that's one consideration. The next one is, the last one we'll talk about is equalizing storage. And what that is, is you have to plan for your worst day. In fact, the worst two hours of your worst day. So based on the number of homes and your average day demand, based on the characteristics of our system, there are scaling factors. And if you go to the spreadsheet in the back, I kind of run through the calculations. From your a average day demand, you can get your peak day demand. And from that, you can scale that up again to your peak hour demand. So just as an example, the worst, I guess, the worst case scenario. So if everybody's on irrigation and we're planning for six thousand homes, the peak hour demand would be nine thousand gallons a minute. That's what that's what we would calculate would be on the hottest day of the year, when everybody's using water, we would need to be delivering nine thousand gallons a minute. Well, we can't do that, even with our, we've got good sources out there. We can deliver four thousand gallons a minute. So we have to have a big enough pushing in there to supply per DOH requirements, two and a half hours of that difference. Okay. And so that equalizing storage is the other bucket that then can be affected. That that's really the only bucket that can be affected by how many average gallons a day they use.
Right.
Does that make sense? So so it is affected, but it's the the bigger number that affects it is how many houses are we going to plan for? Forty-five hundred-ish, and you guys can pick a different number. You want to plan for five thousand. If you want to plan for ten thousand, that affects that bucket. And then and then the how many average gallons per day affects the equalizing storage. And we can rerun the numbers. It's it's no big deal. But you, so you can see in the back that after going through all of that, and if you want to follow the spreadsheet, if you want to come talk to me about the spreadsheet, I don't, I'll run you through the numbers. But long story short, if we plan for six thousand units at, and everybody's using irrigation, we estimate by use, we took the the estimated cost in twenty twenty-three of seven point two five million for that, for the biggest, for the sixty-five foot tank. And we we did a basically a four percent annual escalator from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, when we hoped to be able to build this tank, that the cost would be about eight point four seven million. If you go for forty-five hundred units and everybody's irrigating, we estimate it to be a little over a million less. If you go six thousand units and at the fifty fifty split, it would be seven point nine one million. And if you go with forty-five hundred units at the fifty fifty split, you get down to six point seven nine million. Now, if we, and basically, I took the calculation to come up with the minimum diameter that we would have to 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 have all three of those buckets at the right size. And then I did just did a scaling factor on the the original S cost estimate to come up with those numbers. So if we decided to do something different, I rounded the tanks to an even five feet, just for constructability. So we have a, the biggest one, did I not actually? Oh, I did. So sixty-five down, could go down to fifty feet at the scenarios that we presented. It might be able to go a little smaller if we want to get less conservative or or plan for fewer units. But that looks like the range that seemed logical to me. So again, the the main things that we would want your input on to help us narrow this down and to pick a diameter would be how many units do we want to plan for? And the they average daily demand based on how how many units we think are going to be irrigated or not irrigated with city water?
Are there are there any tanks that we're using right now today that service six thousand units?
So we have nine reservoirs currently in the system. And and we serve, we have about, oh, it's just under fourteen thousand connections. But they're all different zones and some of them are industrial, some of them are not. So do I have a single tank that only serves residential? And it's six thousand units? I I can't tell you that up for certain because they're all kind of tied together in various configurations.
I guess my question is is that to build something for a thirty-year project, it it I would not like to see something of that size hold up production today. But if that was a tank that was big enough for at two hundred units a year, you know, that could keep up with fifteen years and in fifteen years, say, we'll need another like-sized tank at that point. But rather than taking such a big project, and maybe it is, it's not that much different, but if there was a difference that maybe we build a tank today that can, you know, whatever calculation do we use, that can deal with fifteen years of growth. And and by the time those fifteen, those arguably three thousand homes get built, which would be at a much faster rate than what we're doing now anyway, and and then build another tank. I just don't want to see a a project that is so big, you know, keep stuff from happening now. You know, I I I would not want, I wouldn't want to do that. I'd want to build something small enough for a projected timeframe that is reasonable. And then if that gets built out, then build another one. And we'd have fifteen years to watch that progress take place and plan for it.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to go over some of the numbers you mentioned earlier. So you're you're saying thirteen hundred now and potentially ten thousand homes, right? So is that in addition to the thirteen hundred or is the thirteen hundred part of that?
When we were, we were looking at all of May Valley, based on what's there and and available land that could be developed to city densities, what do we think a number would be out there? And it was projected as high as ten thousand. So.
Okay, so the thirteen hundred would be subtracted from that. So you're talking about an additional eighty-seven hundred. Is that correct?
Yeah, close to nine thousand, yeah.
Okay, so just following what Councilmember Scog's mentioned. So if we have one large tank, and I'm assuming these houses are going to be spread out among May Valley, right? So is there logistics issues where it's better to have two tanks that are on opposite ends? Or if you have one large one and it's going to supply all these homes, are there logistic issues with just having one large one like that? Because we have a delivery issue here in the city currently, right? So that's why I'm asking the question.
So the the end that we're looking to build it on is the highest end of May Valley. So if we were to, if if we want, we're trying to say we would bracket it on both ends. The south end is much lower, so it would have to be a much taller tank in order to be at the same elevation level. Right now, our sources, we have, we have a source at May, we have a source at Moses Point, we have a source down near Blue Heron Park. We're going, we're going to be adding another source at Blue Heron Park. And there's also a booster pump station that would continue to to supplement from the central zone during those really peak heavy use times when we would need to share. But so to have another tank on the south end, it would be more difficult to construct it. And because we have a twelve-inch main all the way up and down West Shore Drive, it would be, it would be, we wouldn't necessarily have to have another tank on the south end. So, you know, building, again, some of the things that go into this, oh, it looks like my battery's getting low here. The the size of the, because the tanks last so long and in fifteen years to to build another tank, I guess, in my opinion, that's not, that's not a very long time in in for infrastructure. And as costs escalate, you know, time, I'm not a time value of money expert. But Madeline might be better to talk about with this, but it would seem like to build another tank in in only fifteen or twenty years would be a big ask for the community. If we could build a bigger tank today, I this is my personal opinion, but I think it would be easier to maybe build it today because it always costs less today than it does in thirty years or twenty years or fifteen years. So but that's, that's a decision that council would need to to direct.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
We'll build, we'll build it as big as you'll let us.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I just wanted to make sure that question was asked from a logistics standpoint and flexibility standpoint. So I appreciate your addressing that. Thank you.
Councilmember Madewell.
So one of my issues is that we think small. I think that part of the problem in the city is that we have gone small and we've not, now we're out looking for more money, more water, whatever. The difference between the two is just a little over a million dollars. I would rather go large to begin with and not have to worry about in fifteen years or whatever. I do, I want to ask a question. So that's my opinion. On the mid fifty fifty, where do you think if the people were going to irrigate their own property, where do you think that water would come from?
Well, that is a great question. There's, from what I know in the area, there would be essentially two op, there's essentially two options. One would be if they can get a straw into the lake and get MLIRD to serve them. So if they're in close proximity to the lake, you know, so if they're in close proximity to the lake, you know, maybe within that first half mile or maybe even a mile, I don't know. They, they'd have to put in a pump station, they'd have to put in a pipe and they'd have to pump it from the lake. The other options could be, they would have to go find their own water rights, either a, like a Quincy Basin um, irrigation right or a regular groundwater right. And then they would have to put in their own well, um, and then, you know, um, and in both cases, they would have to set up their, you know, their HOA. Um, and they would have to have somebody running this irrigation utility, uh, for the, the people within that subdivision. Um, so, uh, no, those are the only two sources of water we have. It doesn't fall out of the sky. Um, so they'd either have to get it from the lake or they'd have to get it from the ground.
Where would our water come from to fill the big tank?
What, excuse me?
Where would our water come from to fill the, this proposed tank?
So currently we have, um, two, uh, basalt wells in May Valley and they're two of our better performing wells. Um, currently, they're, they're falling less rapidly than a lot of our other wells. And then we also have, um, we are working towards getting well thirty four, which will be a shallow well, um, there, n- near Blue Heron as well, coming online. And then the, like I said, the fourth source would be, uh, we do supplement, we would be able to continue to supplement on, on a needed basis from the central zone, uh, into the Moses Point zone. So currently they come from groundwater wells.
So the difference between your mid fifty fifty and the one hundred percent isn't very much money. I.
Oh darn, my computer just died. Um, or did it just go to sleep?
Um, I think we need to start thinking a little bit bigger than what we've been thinking and especially where we're having issues with water already. I just think that, um, we're just smart to, to go with the big and go from there, in my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Fancher?
I, I fully understand all that. My concern is this. W- w- we've got also on the backside of this, figure out who's going to pay for this well, or this storage tank. Okay, so the storage tank is, is typically paid or your infrastructure, I mean, the developers put, we keep talking about worried about this purple pipe. When you create your own irrigation utility or whatever, there's going to be purple pipe or a separate irrigation system. And the developer is going to put that in. Developer is going to have to pay his fair share of this tank. And if the tank is big enough to go six thousand units and it takes us fifty years to get six thousand units, do we ever get our money back? For their fair share? Or do we do it different and we just charge the first few people to do the whole, the whole cost of the tank? Which that's not how I'm comfortable with. Um, and so I think it's not just, I, I, I can appreciate exactly what everybody says about build it big and it's more affordable today, but we're the ones funding at the beginning through ETA policy and, and connection charges will get that money back, but how fast? And you just said fifty nine, you said fifty nine units average, I think, or whatever, in May Valley. Go, just so you know, the market's a little soft right now. So, so I don't know how long, I mean, using a hundred, I, I mean, I, I just, that's a lot of units.
It's a lot of units.
Um, and so that's thirty to forty years to get the payback. And so that, that's, that's where I'm, I, I struggle with the whole thing. And that's why I say a million dollars is a million dollars. That we're funding.
Councilmember Myers?
I was just trying to do some basic math and I was kind of following Judy on the, her thought process of going bigger. Um, the more units we can get in on a bigger tank, the cheaper it is per unit. Which developers, yeah, it's going to take longer, but it is cheaper per unit. Which housing affordability. Um, I don't know how that looks thirty, forty years from now, but if we're developing, uh, between sixty to a hundred units in the, out in May Valley, is that the payment, at least covering the payment on the bond that we would have to do for it? Because I mean, if you, if you're getting that at least, it's, it's covered.
Councilmember Lombardi?
Yeah, so that raises a really good question, doesn't it? Nobody's really bro- broached that topic. So when the consultant came here, Madeline, um, the other day and proposed from twenty twenty seven, this twelve million dollar bond, was this part of the concept? Because he got, he said he got the numbers from staff.
Believe it was included in the, the list of, um, projects that were, uh, part of that infrastructure and part of that rate study.
Okay, so did you take the lower number or did you take the higher number?
I would have to go back and look at the data to see what they used.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
There's been a lot of talk. So let's get back to the original question or you are wanting direction from council as to the size. So what I've heard is that, um, this is a pretty conservative number, the, the fifty fifty. Um, I would like to see, um, a little more of an, a reality check, I guess, that we're presuming, based on some of our policies that we're working on, that, um, there won't be as many homes at the fif- five hundred and sixty two. Um, I'd like to see that, that change, that number, that fifty fifty. Um, because I, I deal with reality. Um, this is a, a, a guess and I understand where you're coming from. Um, as, as the engineer, you want to make, um, the best decision, you kind of want to make it based on the worst case scenario, right? Yeah.
I like safety factors.
Yes, I, and I understand that. As a nurse, I understand that. Um, but that really is what's going to, um, you know, that is going to affect the, the amount that this is going to cost and then, um.
To, yes, to, uh, uh, the, the bigger, if you really want to shrink the tank size, we need to basically say, we're only going to serve three thousand units, not forty five hundred, not six thousand. That, that will make a, a much bigger difference than, than that other, it will make a difference, but not a, a huge difference like if you're planning on fewer units. I mean, I can, I can run those numbers. Um, and, and bring something back, that's, that's no problem. I, I can do that. My, my battery just died, so, um, but, um,
Well.
we can do that. Uh, but like I said, that's, those are, those are the two, the two factors. Once I, once I've been, once we've received that, let's plan for X number of units total. And let's plan for this usage rate, the, the numbers follow easily.
Well, I'm not, um, looking to, um, restrict the growth out there down to three thousand. Um, I'm not sure that we need to build as large as possible. I'm, I'm a middle man, kind of. I want something in the middle that makes more sense and is less, uh, expensive, but still serves or allows for, uh, decent growth out there. Is that too vague and too hard to do?
That, that's just vague enough where I need a little more. I, I, I just, like I said, I just need a number. Uh, i- if you, if you guys are comfortable, again, with the forty five hundred, that would be, that would be aggressive in the fact that it's more than we're currently doing. If, if Moses, if May Valley really takes off, like I've heard a lot of people say that that's where they think e- everything's going to happen, a lot of growth is going to happen, then a hundred units a year for thirty years, that's, that's a lot. That's, it's still a lot. It's still a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, I've been wanting to point this out. It's, I mean, we understand that there's, there are a lot of potential lots out there that are in the pipeline, right? That are more than just the back of the napkin idea.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
But even if you took all of those, it doesn't add up to the thirty two hundred.
Correct, but i- if we have what's, at least some of the property owners that have come in with, you know, some are, are further along than others.
Exactly, but still, and then if you take scenario four, which is your fifty fifty at the forty five hundred total E R U's, if we come in at far better than fifty fifty,
Yeah.
then all of your calculations have just changed.
Well, the, the other, the other thing you could consider is, is if, if we build, so the, the the smallest tank, the fifty foot tank.
Yeah.
If it comes in way better than, than the bottom number actually could grow over time. If we see a lot more conservation out there, maybe when we start getting towards thirty two hundred new units, maybe we could go to thirty eight hundred.
And that's where I'm going with this, is that there's, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit more optimistic, like councilmembers Martinez and Fancher are, you know, it's, uh, thirty years is a long time, but that's like, that is the most aggressive in my mind. I know that when we had talked about giving water to people in the U G A, it's, we were talking about a hundred per year. And again, that's, that's aggressive for that period of time, but that person's not going to be building that thing for thirty years continually and just keep going. There is a, there's only so much property for each one of those two projects we're looking at right now. And, and it doesn't even come close to this thirty two hundred or forty five hundred. And, and again, that's, we're using fifty fifty at our worst case scenario. So I think we have a little bit more leeway here than, than we may think. The other thing to consider here is, at the end of the day, we've got a lot of things to do with a limited amount of money regarding water period. So anywhere where we can scale projects appropriately to make our dollars stretch further is a good idea. Also, as Mr. Fancher pointed out, we're, we're not only asking, we're effectively demanding that any of these citizens or residents are doing something that nobody else in the city is doing, which is providing their own irrigation at a cost, which is probably more if you wanted to do the calculation than, than this is going to cost them per lot. And so with all of those things in mind, you know, I tend to want to take it closer to scenario four.
Councilmember Lombardi?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question actually for Mark, or two questions. So since you are about as familiar with May Valley as anybody. Um, first question is, do you agree with, uh, the ten thousand number? Um, okay, and, okay. There's so many other factors besides water when we get that big. We just talked about transportation issues, you know, on, on the last one. Who's building the new interchanges? And I just think we're, 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 we got to get back into, to, to where we're at.
I mean, that's why I asked the question. Okay, so the other question is, let's say the port does explode the way they, it's possible.
Okay.
That all these companies come in and a lot of jobs just come in. Obviously, whether that happens or not, we can't build homes that fast.
Mm-hmm.
Right? But my question is, would that growth all take place in May Valley or would there be, what other areas would, would be considered?
There's large projects south of town here going on right now.
They handle that down a volume?
Well, there's, there's ground all over. I mean, to the south. Um, you think of everything between I ninety and Dune Lake, there's still lots of ground out there and be, and there would be lots of people wanting to do projects there because of its proximity to I ninety as well as hospital, all that kind of stuff. May Valley, um, like I, I think I've said before.
But can we deliver water to those areas if, if it explodes?
Yeah, but we'll have the same, I mean, the same things are going to happen. I mean,
Right.
But the other good news, again, proximity to the lake.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think there's opportunities. Uh, uh, real, real quick on that, the, the, this thirty two hundred number, just, I mean, the, the small number. Just a little bit more. The other thing, if we do thirty two in, in this record time of, I want to see what kind of sales tax income we're getting. I mean, our, our pie of money changes if it's that big of a boom.
Yeah. Um, the reason that I asked that question, I knew some of the answers, but
Yeah.
the fact of the matter is, is that by some of this large scenarios, it's almost like we're putting all our eggs in one basket over there. Right? I understand that. And so we can't control where developers want to build. And so if there are other options for them to build, then they may not be doing it all in, in that area. And so then that comes into the decision as to the size when we're doing this risk, uh, ratio analysis, right? So.
So I, I would ask you this real quick on just when you, this is a perfect point of what you said. So right now, um, and, and this is just one builder, Hay- Hayden Homes has three projects in town. They have one at Maple Landing, they have one at Barrington Point, and they have one at Sand Hill, which is off West Shore. You, if, if I would ask anybody along here, which, let's just go down to Sand Hill now and Barrington Point, and that's by Polo Ridge. Which one would be more valuable to everybody? Which one would outsell which one and why? Location.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm going to tell you, i- i- it kind of blew me away because I, I mean, I mean, I do this, but asking questions, this month alone, we're going to sell ten at Barrington Point and there's one sale at Sand Hill. And they have product ready and we don't. And I started asking why. I mean, Sand Hill, you got, I, I, because I've said that, right? There's two golf courses, there's a great boat launch, it's a great quality of life. You forget about what's important to everybody, not just maybe Mark. Meaning, I want to be closer to medical. I don't want to drive across I ninety. I don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to be on that side of town in case we talk about safety and stuff. So I think there's so many limiting factors. And here's the unique thing about Moses Lake. It's not a round lake. There's four quadrants, pretty distinctive, and people live in all four. And I think they're going to continue to want to live in all four. So what, to your point,
Yes.
why don't we want to wrap them into one location?
Yes. No, you're hitting it on the nose. So not only can we not control where we build, we can't control where people want to live either. And so, good. Thank you, Mark.
Councilmember Myers?
Just trying to get back to deciding on, I guess, the growth rate. So if we continue at sixty houses per year, let's say we want to build to a fifty year life before we have to build another one, that's three thousand units. Then we decide what usage rate, and if everybody's leaning towards the fifty fifty, we're looking at probably a something smaller than even fifty in diameter of the tank than what's even shows here. If you want to be on the high end of the five sixty two, we're still you know, fifty feet as a diameter. It's just our appetite and how thin, how fast we think it's going to grow and how long do we want that tank to last before we need a new one?
Uh, so just, uh, like I said, the depreciation schedule on a new steel tank is fifty years. But like I said, we have several tanks that are in great shape that are over fifty years old. So, I mean, realistic, I, I would be comfortable saying, um, that, that ta- the useful life for that tank is going to be at least seventy five years. Do we think we, I mean, uh, just as a, to pose a question, do we want to build something that we would want to grow into in seventy five years? Is it worth it? Uh, that's not my decision, but the tank's going to last that long, for sure. And be usable, so.
That's forty five hundred units at sixty units a year for seventy five years,
Mm-hmm.
which is the fifty five, the midsize.
So anyhow.
Okay. So a lot of good discussion.
So, and, and, and I don't, I mean, I don't know about, uh, I, I mean, I don't have to have this number tonight. But we are, are looking for this direction, you know, so I don't, I don't know. I mean, if you want to throw some numbers at me to run some scenarios and, and just get a report to you all to, to kind of look at, to consider or?
Yeah, I would like to. Yeah, I would like to take the option or scenario four, which is the fifty fifty and look at it at sixty six thirty three.
Okay.
At sixty six thirty.
So, so the thirty two hundred additional units at sixty six thirty three. Yeah.
Yeah, sixty six percent at the lower.
Yeah, correct. And, and the thirty three at the.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate your point that we are trying to be as mindful as we can about our supply, but somebody else. I mean, I'm trying to think of a scenario like on the backside of the golf course or something where yeah, there's some good land, developer may say, you know, I just can't get the water here, and somebody says, okay, fine, you can have it. But, you know, I I, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction pretty well at this point, and we're asking all the right questions about MLIRD and all these other things, right? So I remain optimistic. It's just, I think it's scary to, to present this and have that scenario be the low scenario. Right? Well, we can always build another tower.
We can, we can.
And, you know, somebody brought up the, the second lake crossing and what would happen and all of that, and my thinking in that is, again, I mean, where Mark's going with this and Victor, where you've got transportation issues and there's going to be money that's going to be allocated to this area that's part of a larger suite of spending as this thing materializes over time. And at that, I think at those junctures, it's, people can make an appropriate decision, you know?
Yeah.
In that six in that sixty, sixty six thirty three, I, I guess I'd still like to know what the number is that we are on the hook for right now today. What have we made commitments as in the city limits? How many homes are there that we've said that's what there? And, and I mean, if you did, I just kind of did some math, if that was an eighty twenty, it would reduce the, the need by almost thirty percent. Um, if, you know, if it was eighty percent at two hundred and sixty, two, uh, twenty percent at five sixty two.
So aga- again, it would, it would reduce the day to day need out of the ground. But as far as the actual tank size, the, it's not gonna reduce it by that same percentage.
Okay.
Just basically because again, the biggest, the biggest bucket of water is we gotta have two hundred gallons a day per whatever number of homes that we're planning on. At, you know, at the, the thirty two hundred new connections, we need nine hundred thousand gallons. That is emergency storage. That number doesn't change.
I have a question for.
County account, account for fire suppression water.
They don't.
I know.
They don't. Their, their policy is they bring tender trucks and they will fill their tender trucks from whatever water source they can find. If we've got a hydrant in the area, they'll go get it from the hydrant. If there's a canal in the area or a pond, they'll go get it from the canal or the pond. That's how the county fight, fights fire.
City manager Carl Lindsay.
Question for Richard, if, if your computer was back on and you had a few minutes, could you run these calculations at sixty six thirty three and eighty twenty?
Uh, yeah, if I can, if I can borrow somebody's plug in real quick.
So I have an idea, so, and you could come up with the cost of the tank?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, um, what if we went on to the next item and let Richard run some numbers and we come back to this?
Great.
Okay, so sixty six thirty three and eighty twenty at the thirty two hundred gallons.
Okay, okay. You want sixty six thirty three and eighty twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, good luck, Richard.
And I don't believe he works by the hour, so this should take only a few minutes, right? Okay. All right, so we will, uh, take a pause on that item number three. And we'll move to item number four, which is the intent to annex Washington Department of Natural Resources land. This is actually being presented by our Parks Recreation and Cultural Services Director, Mr. Doug Coates.
I'll take.
Oh, sorry, I read right past that, but that makes a lot more sense, Vivian. It could have been fun, Doug, I don't know. Yeah.
It would have been a park.
He really likes that property. So we received an intent to annex from DNR, as you mentioned. It's, uh, twenty acres on Valley Road, right, uh, north of Cascade Park. And this is like the fifth annexation, intent to annex that you've, uh, considered, so you probably know what to do next. If you want to allow this annexation to proceed through the process, you need to make a decision on the three things. The first one is to accept or modify the boundary as presented. Adopt the land use designation and zoning that's in the comprehensive plan, which is medium density land use designation, which would, which is implemented by the RT zoning. And the third one is to require, have the property require the assumption of city debt upon annexation. And those are the three items you need to consider for this.
Where are city services in relation to this parcel?
Cascade Park.
Yeah, there's water adjacent to it, uh, as well as wastewater.
Adjacent.
And this, and this is all coming right off the top of my head, imaging the map, but yeah, it is close.
And you said this is for, for R two?
Yes. That's the designation today.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Scog.
Um, obviously that land has never been developed.
Correct.
If, if we did not annex it, would it still, would it stay undeveloped?
Uh, likely.
Okay. So I, I would, I would love to see, I think that's a cool piece of property, that, uh, some neat stuff could happen there. And I'd like to see that be made available to let somebody develop it. And if that's in making an agreement with the state, I, I think that's a good, I think that's a good thing.
Well, there is a proposed motion here, Dave.
Okay. What's, let me get to the right number.
Here, I can give it to you right here.
All right. I move that we authorize the Department of Natural Resources to proceed with the annexation process. City Council accepts the geographical boundaries as proposed. Requires that the bound, property assume all the city indebtedness and that the annexed area, land area, uh, use designation will be medium density residential consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'm assuming Richard isn't quite done, but maybe he is. Okay, we'll move to new business at this point. Item number five, which is the LTAC or Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations. I'm sorry, Doug, you are now up. That makes a lot.
I was gonna ask if Vivian wanted to do this one.
That also could be fun.
That could be fun too. Um, good evening, Mayor, and Councilmembers wanted to bring to you the recommendations uh, for lodging tax revenues for twenty twenty six. Uh, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has reviewed all of the applications received. Uh, there were thirty eight total applications, one was deemed ineligible. Uh, it was, uh, provided by a for-profit entity, uh, for developing private property, which is not eligible under lodging tax, uh, rules and laws. So one was deemed ineligible, so thirty seven total applications were eligible. They requested one million, four hundred and five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars in funding. The total budget for projects this year is determined by the smart people, uh, smarter than me in the finance department, was one point one million. Uh, after presentations for each of the applicants, the committee met and recommended that all but four of the applications receive some level of funding. The four applications that are not recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee are as follows. Uh, city of Moses, city of Moses Lake applied for museum and surf and slide operations in the amount of approximately three hundred thousand, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, and these were funds to help offset the operations expenses for the city's two tourism facilities, surf and slide and the museum and art center. Uh, the city of Moses Lake, uh, applied for staff time to support special events run by others in the city. This was a request for forty thousand dollars in funding to cover the city's staff costs associated with the running of special events uh, in the downtown core, closing streets, uh, police presence, those kinds of, uh, costs. Uh, and then Moses Lake Spring Festival applied for an amphitheater bathroom remodel for sixty thousand dollars to remodel the bathrooms at the Macosh Amphitheater. And MLIRD applied for their Moses Lake Water Quality Program for seventy five thousand dollars in funds for the MLIRD Water Quality Program for Moses Lake. The LTAC Committee Funding Recommendations totaled seven hundred and seventy nine thousand dollar, seven hundred and seventy nine thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars with the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommending that the remaining three hundred and twenty thousand be moved to the LTAC fifteen percent future capital fund for future tourism related projects. The city manager, uh, amended these recommendations with his own, uh, recommendations to council to alleviate pressure on the city's general fund budget for twenty six, twenty twenty six. His recommendation includes all of the LTAC Committee's recommended funding and adds back in two of the items not re- recommended by the LTAC Committee to some level. Uh, the recommendation was to add the forty five thousand dollars of funding to cover city staff costs associated, associated with the running of special events by outside organizations and at forty thousand dollars, and then allocating the remainder of the three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty eight dollars or two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and eighty eight dollars to the surf and slide and museum operations, effectively reducing the currently proposed general fund deficit, fund budget deficit from one million, thirty six thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollars to seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. This would allocate the three hundred and twenty thousand, three eighty eight dollars that the LTAC Committee recommends be set aside for future capital projects uh, to the city's general fund to support, to support sewer, tourism facilities and events and allowable expense for LTAC funds while not impacting any of the funds recommended to support special events or projects by the LTAC Committee. Wow, that was a lot. Um, additionally, uh, I'm sorry, looking forward to future cycles, the pressure on the general fund will need to be addressed, and the cost for supporting special events will continue to increase as staff costs for city, will, city staff will con- continue to increase. If council does not elect to use the LTAC funds for these expenses going forward, the city may need to consider passing these costs on to the groups running the events in future years. Additionally, the LTAC Committee has agreed that the fifteen percent carve out that is taken out of the annual revenues from lodging tax is confirmed as being for any future capital projects, not specifically for a convention or conference center. As such, staff will be working to put together a separate process for municipalities to apply for funding from these funds. This will be on a case by case basis with project review and recommendation by the LTAC Committee to the city council for final review and approval. Uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions on these items.
Yeah, I have a question. I think I'd asked, uh, city manager Carl Lindsay about the, any data we have on specifically the aquatic center and I didn't get a chance to see the applications, so.
Certainly. Um, and I, I had emailed that through on Monday morning, I believe, but I can pull up. And.
My boss kept me pretty busy this week, so.
Pulling that up, can I just offer some thoughts?
Yeah.
So, um, the staff recommendation, um, doesn't, um, uh, take away funding from any of the projects or any of the programs that the LTAC Committee is recommending. What we're doing is saying, instead of taking the three hundred and thousand that the LTAC wants to send over to the capital fund, we're saying use that to help the general fund and take pressure off the general fund. When I first got started in this career, my mentor taught me a few things. One of the things he taught me was to protect the general fund and to take pressure off the general fund whenever possible, because the general fund is our most flexible fund, our least restricted fund, and it also happens to be the fund that bears the burden of most city services. It also happens to be the most vulnerable fund, subject to the most economic fluctuations. So for those reasons, it's really important to protect the general fund, take pressure off it. And whenever you can charge, um, city services to oth- other funds that have those restrictions, but you can logically charge them to, then that's something you should consider. Um, and, you know, it, it is, um, pretty common, I would say, from the cities I've interacted with, that if city staff time is going into promoting heads in beds or promoting overnight stays, it's, it's not unheard of for lodging tax to pay for that amount of staff time that's spent promoting overnight stays. Doug, did I buy you enough time?
Uh, yep, I'm there. I'm just gotta get back in here and share my screen now. If I can find it, there we go. All right. Cool, you're in my way now. There we go. So here, this is a surf and slide report, uh, from our placer AI, and I'm gonna get right back up to the top here if I can. So, um, talks about surf and slide water park where it is. Um, this is visits, uh, greater than fifty miles away. Um, where they identify their home as being, their home zip code wherever they're from. So in twenty twenty five, the season was, uh, May twenty third through September first. Uh, we had three, thirty thousand, two hundred visits from beyond fifty miles from Moses Lake.
And if any of the other applicants, uh, that provided those sorts of metrics, where does that fall and all that?
I, it's, I, I would say it's number one right across the board. Uh, I, I think the closest to next one would be, uh, obviously Spring Fest.
And that's, yeah, why I'd ask for that data is, you know, I didn't, I intended to, but again, my boss kept me busy this week so far, so, uh, I'd intended to look, though, it's sort of what the genesis of this LTAC program is.
Sure.
You know, I think we can kind of get lost in these feel-good sort of initiatives that we have going on, but there's when it was set up, as far as I understand, again, without researching it too much, is there's a direct correlation they're identifying here, right? Which is that certain events bring people to this city so that they spend money in these particular businesses that then give back to these events. So there's, this is a symbiotic relationship, right? And so for that reason, I, I would agree completely that an entity that brings in thirty thousand visitors from out of town per year does exactly that and very well. Um, and so I get the logic there completely. Uh, the other one I wanted to look at, and again, the same theory there is the MLIRD had asked for the seventy five thousand dollars for lake quality specifically. I think that's a harder number to nail down, but if I had to venture to guess, it would be at a top five. As, as far as the lake itself is concerned.
Correct, and, and the, the MLIRD, uh, application was not rejected based on its, um, being a valid use of these funds. It was rejected because the budget that was provided and the detail that was provided did not give us, did not give the committee enough detail to be able to say this is what we're doing with the seventy five thousand dollars, so.
I appreciate that, I do, and you know, personally, I would tend to excuse that a little bit more than I would with another entity, but that's my own personal view on it. They have elected board members and that's an established entity that we're supposed to rely on. You know, and there's a level of trust there. Um. And I think we're trying to maintain a relationship and maybe even bolster our relationship with, with that entity. So for me to make that gesture to them is important. Um, we're talking about water again, water quality. Uh, so for those reasons, I, I would probably look at funding that request at least somewhat. So where I got with this is to say, you know, that I understand setting aside some money, but without an absolute objective for that money, that gets a little bit risky. Um, so I don't know that we should be giving that amount right off the bat. So I'd propose like twenty five thousand for these future projects out of the.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, uh, I should clarify, the fifteen percent carve out, we already have fifteen percent right off the top that goes aside to this every year.
Well, that number just got smaller for me then.
Yeah, there is. So, so the, and then, um, uh, Madeline can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but I believe the number was just over a hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty six going immediately into this fund that will be, is for future projects.
Okay. And I would say zero would be my amount that I would propose for that, but, uh. So I would say I would like to see the seventy five thousand go to the MLIRD and then the remainder go to the city. Be my preference. Councilmember Scog.
If, if the premise of this account was monies that were brought in by visitors to Moses Lake. And, and then those dollars get dis- distributed. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the, and full disclosure, my wife is involved with the Spring Festival. I end up being there till two AM oftentimes myself. Um, but I can't see the relationship between the Spring Festival and say Moses Lake Youth Hockey. That it, that it receives more LTAC money than Spring Festival. That makes no sense to me. Um, I think it is probably a neat program, um, but, uh, or the BMX bike, the bounty hole, mud flats trucks. I don't know how many, most of those people stay out in the sand dunes. So I, I don't think, I, I, I think those are, there's a real disparity between who generates the, these, the LTAC funds and who gets them. I, that doesn't make, this distribution doesn't make any sense to me unless somebody can tell me, here are the numbers that the BMX Association brings into town in rooms. Maybe they can't.
So I, I can address the youth hockey and the BMX and the Sand Scorpions all do bring in a huge amount of people into town. Um, do they rival Spring Fest in their amounts? I don't know that detail. But I do know that youth hockey, the reason they like youth hockey, the reason they like, um, the swim team is they fill up their hotel rooms. Um, they put heads in beds directly. The, the youth hockey has three tournaments and they max those out now with another, I think this year they're going up to ten teams. They had eight teams in prior years. Um, the committee, uh, the hoteliers on the committee commented significantly that um, Sand Scorpions, they wanted to give more money to for their bounty hole project because it brings in so many people to town. And while they may stay out on the dunes and stay out there, they do come into town and spend tax money in town. It may not directly be. And, and I think that's something that I'm trying to, I'm, I'm hoping to get our, our, our LTAC committee members as well as everybody else to understand about, about lodging tax. It's not just about heads in beds. It's about bringing tourism to Moses Lake. And when we get tourism to Moses Lake, we not only get lodging tax dollars, we get sales tax dollars. Um, the more people we bring into this town, the more tax revenue we get from people visiting this town. So I, I get where you're, where you're going and I do believe that, um, uh, Spring Fest gets a, a, a good portion of what they ask, where I believe they were fully funded for what they asked for, for their operations. The one they did not get was for the, um, remodel of the bathroom. And that was based on, I, I don't know, I, I think it was more the presentation they presented was, they presented that they wanted it because the toilets were overflowing. And the remodel of a bathroom will not fix the fact that someone flushed something they shouldn't have down a toilet and it backed up and overflowed. Um, a remodel of a bathroom is aesthetic and it, and it wasn't a detailed enough presentation for them to get that. Um, so the, the committee does support Spring Fest absolutely and has with dollars in the past and will continue to. Um, I, I think that the, the other aspects of these are, especially with youth hockey. They bring in people in the, in the downtime, in the quiet season, in the winter. And that's what Spring Fest really likes about hockey. They love the, the, the Sand Scorpions events as well as the swimming events because they put people in the hotels directly.
I guess I would, I, at one time I thought we were, uh, signed up for some software that would tell who was in town and where they stayed and, and all that stuff.
So if you, if you look, if you look at your screen right now, there's actually, that's the breakdown for the people that attended it. Is that better?
No, it went out. There it went.
So this is the percentages of people from the thirty thousand, so zero point eight percent doesn't sound like too much. That stayed at the Best Western this year, but zero point eight percent of thirty thousand, two hundred people stayed at the Best Western. They either came from the Best Western or went to the Best Western afterwards. So these are people, direct stays that can be correlated to people coming to, um, to Surf and Slide Water Park. Now we have similar reports for all the other entities and we can drill down into them even further. Um, but the, the, I, I don't want to sit here and, and nickel and dime and go down into this. I think we're discussing overall policy here and I think that's the way we should view it. And this is the kind of reports that were given to and, and used by the LTAC Committee in making their determination. So they looked at these for prior years and said, hey, was this working? Was this not? Um, but we also have the hoteliers, uh, uh, Tim Mulder was very vocal about, hey, these groups. I know they're in my hotels because I, I know when they're in my hotel because I've talked to them when they're there and I know they fill up my hotel when they're here. So good comments from you, I, I, and I appreciate that, the idea that, that Spring Fest is, I don't think there's anybody on that committee that would say Spring Fest is, you know, not bringing people into town. Um. They knows the bulk of people at Spring Fest, um, are, are generally in this area, but we do get some from out of town. I think the peak year was, uh, and, and I'm gonna throw it out here. I think I've thrown it out at behalf before. It's Vanilla Ice. Ice Ice Baby, he was the one that brought him in and we had huge amounts of people that year and it was up significantly. So there, while Spring Fest can, can vary slightly, every year they are a big contributor to this.
Well, in fairness to you, um, as I'm looking at the very, very top channel there and I'm looking at twenty twenty five funded, twenty twenty six request. And I'm looking at those as requests. Uh, so, um, when you said it was fully funded, that didn't make sense. And now when I actually look at the top, um, now I understand what you just said.
So displaying this now. If you're looking at, um, the, the, the twenty twenty five funded number is what they were funded this current year. The twenty twenty six request is what they asked LTAC for, and then LTAC's recommendation are the next two columns. Which percentage, how much did they get?
I got that.
Okay. So when we're looking at Sand Scorpions, they asked for forty five, they got forty five thousand last year. They asked for sixty this year and they got sixty this year.
Okay.
You know, when you're looking at Spring Festival, they got fifty last year. They asked for eighty this year. They got eighty this year. So they got what they asked for.
Okay.
Uh, now, does that mean they're gonna get what they ask for every year? No, it doesn't, but you can see that they're being given what they've been asked for.
Thank you, Doug. Councilmember Martinez.
I didn't think I'd ever get a chance to say anything. Um. I will say that, um, you know, when we're supporting Manorays and BMX, uh, we're supporting our youth, uh, when youth hockey. I know, uh, the gentleman from BMX is here and, uh, they've been really good partners. Uh, utilizing our, our funds and what you've been able to raise money for, um, to really make that give other kids an option other than, um, say baseball and, you know, some of the typical or routine sports. Um, I do want to say that, um, I am glad that, um, Dustin brought up the MLIRD. I'd meant to bring some information, um, because MLIRD is part of the Watershed Council. Um, it was, uh, uh, just a short, uh, uh, two page that said that, um, angling on the lake and non-angling, um, recreation brings in all, I think, like over four million dollars. So while, you know, it, their request for money, the project, whatever it is is rather vague or there's not anything quite specific about it. I do think that, um, they should be considered for funding this year. Um, because a healthy lake means tourism here. Um, and I would say or agree that, um, again, going back to, uh, what Doug had mentioned, um, it's not always just about heads in beds. Um, it's about, um, providing opportunities here in the city. And I think, uh, if we don't, um, fund the surf and slide operations. It's going to get to a point where our own citizens won't be able to afford to go. I mean, because it, it's already kind of getting there now. So I would prefer to keep that facility open and, uh, let our citizens use it while we're still attracting a lot of people from all over the state, so. And of course, you know, if we want to use our police for these important events like, uh, Spring Fest. I do think that that needs to be supported as well with LTAC money.
Thank you, Deanna.
Hmm.
Yeah, and I would also point out that public safety is a priority of this council. And any resources that we use on special events mean that we have fewer resources to fight other crime, correct? So um, that should be a consideration when we're deciding this. Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I figured I'd let Doug and, um, city manager Carl Lindsay give their points on why they recommended that. Um, just to clarify for Councilmember Scogs, the, uh, the, uh, ask on the bathroom issue uh, came in right at the end. Um, there wasn't a whole lot of information. We got some. Um, I did speak with Lori and we want to still revisit that and see exactly what's going on. But that, but their main one was funded a hundred percent. So just, okay, yeah. Um, and in regards to MLIRD, um, so this one is very unique in the sense that we asked the question, will this be an ask every year going forward? And it sounds like it will be. And I couldn't get an answer, Doug. I asked Doug three times, how can they do what they do the last three years? And now they're going around town asking everybody for money. I mean, they asked the county for a hundred and fifty thousand. They asked us for seventy five. And it, when they made their presentation, they made it sound like, yeah, they'd be coming back again and asking again. So this is starting to get like there isn't anybody on that board that doesn't want to see a clean lake. I actually made the statement that if it had the name Moses Lake on there, that the city should contribute something. Or participate in it. But from this fund, the way it was originally created. There's a word around town that we've got a pot of gold in this account and everybody's looking to get their hands on it right now. And, and that's what's happening. So I don't know how we're going to address the lake as a city. I do think that we need to participate in it. But coming from this and that number of four million dollars, that lake does not bring in four million dollars in angle. Uh, thanks. It does not. That was a general number, I think, when I read that. Not for Moses Lake. So let me just, some of the thoughts that the council or the board had was that we're setting a precedent of using funds for city salaries and this is a large amount. It's never really happened before. Although technically it's a guideline ask, it opens a couple of areas that optically are not great. All the other organizations are essentially volunteer. And those few and rare salary positions have never asked for money to pay salaries. Secondly, the LTAC Board never set guidelines, for instance, as to how much money can be used overall for salaries. Even if it would consider it. The typical uses of these funds are for capital improvements, advertising and product for events. So I, the question, you know, comes up, you know, are we using LTAC funds in this fashion? Is this the spirit of the program when it was created? Number three, the funds being used are for deficit creating operations like the museum that runs a deficit every year. Now, most believe, like I do, that the museum has a purpose and perhaps even a rightful place in a city. But the operation itself does not really put heads in beds and at this stage of its development. So the entire funding somewhat violates the purpose of the creation of the LTAC funds. And four. Once this is done, the citizens of Moses Lake can probably expect this to be a yearly ask, also leading to other organizations that are volunteer based to ask for salary money. And then the question, the real important question comes up, Mayor, when does this end? Number five, the path this is moving. If a city manager and a council can override an LTAC committee, then really what is the purpose of the committee? Again, one can look at this as not being in the spirit of the creation of the board. Number six. The members of this board are all very successful private sector entrepreneurs and this challenges to their authority in a big government way that a city is using LTAC funds instead of making necessary budgetary decisions. Especially when the top two budget line items, which total almost seventeen million dollars, have not really been touched. So these people, you know, they're on the private sector. They know how to read a budget. And then lastly, from the public standpoint. How, this has a feel of a money grab and this fund of unused money was never disclosed distinctly until the day of the decisions. And one member who had been on this board a long time and is very savvy did not know that there was unused funds that has been sitting in this account. And even though it probably was disclosed. Um, it wasn't really very clear. So those are just thoughts for you, for the rest of the council here to think about.
Uh, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Um, two things. One, not necessarily LTAC. Um, the LTAC is an advisory council, correct? Okay.
Correct, correct.
Advises.
Correct. The LTAC Committee is an advisory committee. Uh, if the, uh, council wishes to, uh, adopt the staff recommendations or change the recommendation, it does not immediately approve it. It sends it back to LTAC Committee for them to review and resubmit. So it, it, it is, it is a considered, uh, uh, advisory committee, but I think by statute they have to go back to them for them to review and then bring it back to city council. So this is not just a council is gonna do whatever they want and LTAC has no further say.
And I, I know you haven't been with us that long, Doug, but, um, it's been my experience that it's not unusual to send it back to LTAC, to the council.
Uh, yeah, I have not been involved with this LTAC funding for that long. My, my understanding is, is that it has happened in the past, correct?
Okay, okay. And I guess, um, this is a question for Councilmember Lombardi. Um. I, you lost me when you're talking about salary. Are you, are you alluding that MLIRD's request for money is to pay for an employee?
Not at all. I wasn't referring to them. I was referring to the three hundred thousand that was going for the museum and the surf and slide salaries. So the MLRG is totally different.
Okay. Well, I think you'd mentioned seventy five thousand. That's why I kind of got it connected with MLIRD. Anyway, uh, thanks for that clarification. Um. So that answers my questions about LTAC specifically. Um, this request for the bathrooms, it doesn't have to come through LTAC money, right? We can decide that we need to update the bathroom.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just like to add one more thing too. Um, we did fully fund the uh, slide that was requested for the, uh, surf and slide, uh, Doug.
Uh, what we did fund was a, it wasn't a slide. It was a climbing wall. What we did fund was a, it wasn't a slide. It was a climbing wall to replace the, the high dive. The high dive, it's also a, a risk there. We do get, and here's the clarification I'll make on all capital projects. A lot of the capital projects happen at city-owned facilities. So we have requests from outside organizations like Spring Fest, obviously, asking for a bathroom remodel. That bathroom remodel would be city-owned bathrooms being remodeled. So these are, are questions we evaluate. But surf and slide, we didn't request for a climbing wall to be put along the deep end wall. The kids can climb up, adults can climb up and drop back down into the pool. That was fully funded.
In fact, there was even a thought of even making it bigger because that would attract more people to come and stay longer as well, because it's such a big item comparing it to Pasco and some of the other areas. So as far as that particular park, the LTAC committee was fully in support of it.
Doug, for those cities that participate in this, is, is this tax in addition to what they would collect otherwise for lodging tax? Or it's just a repurposing of the tax that would have been collected otherwise?
I'm going to probably defer to Madeline or someone else on that one because I'm not as familiar with that.
Collect a 2% that is considered LTAC 2% of lodging tax and then an additional 2% that is considered cities 2% lodging tax. So there's a total of 4% that is collected for lodging tax for every stay.
So the city received 1.1 million dollars in lodging tax?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Scog?
I think Councilman Lombardi raises some good points. I know part of our function as a city is to, you know, to provide services. I, I don't know that. I, I, I have a difficult time with the whole idea of funding actually, you know, people doing something that they would, you know, I don't know, there's probably some overtime involved. But if they weren't doing a spring festival, if they weren't doing other things downtown, you know, that, that's kind of my mind, their purpose to be there. So I kind of struggle with some of those things that Victor said. I'm not quite understanding the, the red lines or those things that were not funded or those, why were they redlined?
Are you talking about the red lines on that spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, those were the ones that LTAC was not recommending funding for.
Was not recommending.
Correct.
For, okay. I guess so. So they're saying we're not going to use LTAC money to remodel a bathroom? Or we're not going to remodel a bathroom?
We're not going to, they are not allocating or recommending allocation of any funds towards remodeling a bathroom.
Will the city talk about remodeling those bathrooms?
I think we can go back into that. It's not likely to happen next year. But yes, the city would look to remodel those. I think it came down to the decision on LTAC committee's part was, you know, the places like the gorge and other places like that use portable toilets for those events. And that would be a great alternative to remodeling a bathroom and spending those monies there when they could be spent somewhere else. As well as the fact that the problem that was expressed was the toilets were overflowing. And that's really not a function of a remodel. That's more of a function of people misusing the bathroom.
And those bathrooms would never be remodeled to where they could handle the capacity of those events?
You, you would have to tear it all out and start over. The, the pipe below the ground, and I saw Brian nodding out of the corner of my eye. The, the diameter of the pipe does not change in a remodel and that's what you're stuck with.
Mr. Carl Lindsay?
I have a question on Spring Fest. The, the staff time that we spend on Spring, uh, Spring Fest, is that mostly overtime? Or is it mostly straight time that we'd be, be paying for anyway?
It varies. The bulk of the time I'm looking over at Chief Sands because the bulk of the time that we got was for the police presence on site during the event. So I'm going to defer to him on that one.
I would say both. It's rescheduling people, specifically detectives, and then a big chunk of overtime.
Sounds like some of it is straight time that general fund would be paying for anyway, even if there was no Spring Fest?
Correct. Other than we are removing them from their primary duty of being a detective or investigator. But yes, for, I, I would say probably about half.
I just wanted to add for Councilmember Scoggs, the bathroom issue was not a quick decision. It, we couldn't get accurate information as to, because we didn't see any photos. We didn't have any detail or anything like that. Doug had mentioned that staff goes in there every day, right? And make sure that things are functioning?
Staff and we have staff on site every day for the entire festival as well as Spring Fest provides volunteers that go through and, and they do walkthroughs in there and check them. And we have contact with them to be able to tell us, hey, there's a problem. We can get there as quick as we can once we, once we're there. You have to remember that Spring Fest does not just encompass Makosh Park. It's also downtown. So we're also looking at St. Gaius Square. We're also working on all of those projects as well. So our staff is running all the time, just as, you know, Dave's team is over at the carnival and on the Makosh Park site in downtown, depending upon what's happening. It is, it is a huge event. And, and yes, we have issues with bathrooms and cleanliness throughout that event. We're going to continue to battle those. It's just going to be an ongoing battle. We can go in there and check in one minute and walk away. And five minutes later, somebody's decided to have a party and we've got a mess to clean up.
So we couldn't determine, you know, if it needed to be replaced, repaired? Or is it just people that are using it a certain way? The other thing, of course, is that I know they worked on getting a bid fast. We don't have three bids. So it's kind of hard to say, is that number a high number? Is it a low number?
So in the past, doesn't the Cancer Foundation recipient develop tech funds?
They were an applicant, I want to say, two years.
Did you request money for the craft out beer?
Yeah, two years ago.
And they stopped doing it.
And they stopped doing it. And then I think they, they applied one year and never held the event and they were awarded money. They never held the event and the money, that's one of those rollover kind of like, oh, it's still there. So now we can reallocate it the next year.
Councilmember Fancher?
I would just say this. I, I am a big fan of the advisory committees and, and them having, especially when it directly affects their business. And I think they do, I think they have a pretty good working committee. Am I not right? And they have a lot of passion for trying to spend these monies in a correct fashion and making sure that their operations stay successful. I'm, I'm leaning toward, they spent a lot of time on this. There's a very formalized application process. And it's not the last chance for anybody. I would like to look into, no different than anything else in the city, is getting, which I think we're getting there, a good handle on how events as they start to grow pay for themselves. I mean, I, I agree, we do do the LTAC. But if it's costing us extra money to maintain their event through security measures or whatever, how do we look at that as, you know, I think we have to look at some cities that are past us that we're trying to aspire to. And how are they doing that? How are they recovering those costs? Because I can't believe that every city is, is basically happy to help subsidize those events. So that would be my comment. But I do believe that the advisory committee, and I think I was, I was going to say, and I'm glad you brought it up, that the council that, that I've been to these meetings in the past have always had to kick it back. And then they would look at it and sometimes they made changes and sometimes they didn't. But I'm, I'm leaning towards, you know, they, they work hard at it. And I think they, they do a good job of wading through it.
Councilmember Scog?
One comment I would like to make about the MLRD is that that is a taxing district. They can actually impose taxes, which other people can't. But they also only tax in that district. And so the only people contributing to that tax are in the irrigation district. And there's a lot of Moses Lake that is not in that district that gets the benefit. So to some extent, the city really should participate in, in a lot of neighborhoods that don't contribute to the MLRD but are recipients of a clean lake. So I, I think as a city, we do have some responsibility to, to participate in that program just because our citizens who don't pay any of the taxes associated with the MLRD are recipients of, of a good, a good lake.
Councilmember Myers?
My one, the one application that I'm really looking at, wondering why it was funded at the level it was, and I'm saying it may be too high, is the Moses Lake Roundup Rodeo and Demo Derby. Considering how much fees they charge one to, for people to advertise, they're already charging people to advertise. They charge the drivers, they charge entries for the rodeo, they're charging ticket fees. From what I heard, they're getting the avenue, the stadium for next to nothing. Why, why so much? We already give the fair, which is basically the, the same thing nearly, 40,000. I'm just curious what their reasoning was.
That's a great question. So a couple of things. We were trying to evaluate, looking at the numbers. Was it the rodeo bringing in people to the fair or was it the fair? That was one issue. The other thing is last year they had asked for a certain amount for advertising and marketing and social media. And they were able to show that with the increase in the money, that they were bringing in more people. So, so they, they had somewhat of traction going on. That was one of the things we were looking at from notes from previous years as to those that asked for more. And they said they would do X. We were holding them accountable. And so if they did, then we kept on going with it. So that, that's basically was the philosophy behind it.
Yeah. And again, that goes back more to what is the objective here? If heads in beds, right? So if the event brings in heads in beds, it's less of our concern how they do that. If people are willing to pay the gate fees and do all that stuff and buy a hotel room for the night. So what?
I just remember in our, there was a presentation that Doug did and it showed that their users were dropping, that there was less visits. Now, we didn't get to see how many of those particular users went to actual hotels. So I was curious if we, if they were presented that information and what were the feedback from the hoteliers? Does it actually, do they actually?
Yeah. Tim Muller was very, very positive on that. They pretty much, the people that actually participate in the rodeo, well, they, they need to stay somewhere as well. So they were taking up a lot of the rooms. So a lot of that was in. The other thing to Mark's point, which also fits into your question, Don, too. The fair came in at a higher number. And one of the things they said was we had to add all the security, which is comparable to adding more police. And we said, this is where we're at. So we, we didn't fund anything more based on that.
Just to comment on that, the Roundup and Demo Derby was funded in 2025, the same amount they're recommending for funding this year. It was not an increase in funding. The amount they requested in 2025 was 80,000. And this year they requested 100,000, but they got the same 59,000 recommendation. And I believe that's a similar scenario with the fair. I think, yeah, the fair was awarded 40,000 last year. And then in last year's request, they asked for 75,000, they got 40, they upped it to 100,000, they still got 40 recommended. So the funding level hasn't changed. The requests are going up.
Councilmember Martinez?
Want to go back to, I think, something that Councilmember Fancher mentioned. And then the whole purpose of this is the heads in beds, right?
The whole business of this is not technically heads and beds. It is the promotion of tourism of Moses Lake. Heads and beds is, is a, is a part of that, but it's not the sole purpose of this.
So why wouldn't surf and slide operations be funded if they bring in the next highest or the highest number of people to the city? Because it's kind of the opposite of what they're saying this, this whole thing is about, right?
I, I think the Council Lombardi heard, hit this pretty much on the head. It was, this is a change in how the committee is used to allocating these funds. This is different. This is not comfortable for them. And while it is an allowable use, they did not want to recommend it. I, I know in past I have heard them ask, last year, for example, I heard them ask the Sand Scorpions about doing more and ask them, can you hire somebody to come in and do more for you for advertising? Can you hire somebody to do this? So they aren't averse to the salary aspect of it. They were averse to the change of what we were allocating because we were going, we want you to, to basically take some pressure off our budget by doing this. So I, I get where that was coming from. And it is a change in how this committee has done this. So that's where I think the discomfort comes from.
But we're growing and we're changing. At some point, it's going to happen. It is happening. So.
Senator, I just have one kind of side comment on the rodeo. I, I don't know if this was a requirement this year, but a requirement I'd like to add is that they recognize the city for the contribution. So I attended both the rodeo and the demolition derby. And I was watching the big screen where it showed all the sponsors. And I was watching the screen probably more than I was at the event because I wanted to see the city of Moses Lake because I knew we'd contributed 60 grand. And I never saw Moses Lake recognized on the big screen for the 60,000 bucks it had contributed. So if we do give them money, again, this year, I would ask that the requirement be that, that we be listed as a sponsor on their big screen.
We will put that in our agreements going forward.
That's not unreasonable at all, City Manager. We, this year, each year, we continue to grow in how we document. And I'm, I'll talk a little bit about that in the appointment section. But one of the things that we were doing when we were funding was we had certain requirements that, and notes put in that we're going to be checking on it for the following year. And so one of the suggestions on Sip and Stroll was actually by Doug. And they had asked for, I think, a certain number. We, we only agreed 2,000 less, but it was Doug that mentioned that if they had two bands playing, that it was lacking music, that it would bring in a lot more. And good chance people would stay to listen to them. So we put that caveat, okay, we'll give you that extra 2,000, but it has to be used for bands and music. So your, your request is totally on the money.
Okay. Well, does anybody have any requested recommendations or? Well, I don't know that we've unanimously decided.
Well, I recommend that we do fund some of the surf and slide operations and museum because of our budget, our general fund. I do recommend that if we are providing extra police or law enforcement services, some of that at overtime, that it should also be funded. Because again, like you said, Mayor Swartz, public safety is a priority. We want our people to come and enjoy themselves and know that they're going to be safe because we have a law enforcement presence there. And I will still. And I will still again add in the water quality program. It does bring in millions of dollars, angling and non-angling. That lake is important to us to keep it nice and clean and healthy. I would have preferred that they had been more specific in their use of of this money that they're asking for, but I'm sure that we can require it of them.
Mayor, we couldn't even get an answer as to their request, what they would be spending it on. Okay. I mean, this is like the health district all over again. Okay.
They did provide some supplemental information.
Not like, okay, this is for chemicals or this is for this, that they didn't do that. And so that's, it made that really hard to, to look at.
Well, at this point.
Do you mind if I add, I, I don't know if I heard this correctly, but I, I thought I heard that MLIRD wanted to buy a couple of harvesters with the money. Is that?
So the, and that's what we ran into. The, the request from MLIRD was nonspecific. It was general in its nature and it said for the water quality program for Moses Lake. Had they come to us and put in a request for harvesters to harvest the weeds and, and water plants from the lake, I think it would have gotten funding right off the bat. The budget that they presented for their application was their annual budget. Nonspecific to a project did not indicate to us what they wanted to spend the money on. I can tell you that in future years, uh, we were already talking about setting up a process where uh, my business manager Stephanie Dunn will now be taking those applications initially and reviewing that budget and going, does this match what this is saying? What is the ask for and putting together a summary page so that we don't have that issue going forward again. We will have a concrete and accurate information, but we did not receive accurate information about what they were funding, what we were spending money on. And I would, uh, wholeheartedly concur that while I think the idea of water quality in the lake is a great use of funds. They did not provide us enough information that LTAC, uh, committee felt comfortable issuing those funds. So that's where the break happened. And it had, they said, yeah, we're looking for two harvesters or a harvester. Uh, or this is going to help us fund a purchase. I don't know how much a harvester costs, um, but that would have probably been funded.
Doug, if we send this back to LTAC, would that, would MLIRD be able to provide you that information in that interim for consideration?
I, I think.
Or is that breaking the rules?
I, I don't know the law on that. I would have to defer to the city attorney on that. Um, I know that with LTAC putting, uh, conditions on certain spending, that was okay. I don't know if you can go back and say, hey, we need more detail on this or not. In my mind, it doesn't seem like a problem, but I would defer to the city attorney.
Yeah. So the, the question was, can we send that question back to the, to the LTAC? With additional information provided by the MRT, MLRD to LTAC on what the MLRD, uh, plans to spend the money on? So can we send that back to LTAC and have them review that?
I mean, at, at least it gives them an opportunity. If they don't want to be specific, then they don't get the money, but I think, I think we're sending it back to LTAC anyway, I think. I see Dustin kind of shaking.
I'm not the, the sole.
Right, right.
I mean, I, I have already stated what I would like to see done differently. I'm rethinking a little bit of what I stated before, but still generally there.
So that being the case, we could absolutely reach out to MLIRD and get a specific budget for what they want to use seventy-five thousand dollars for. And then that can be provided to LTAC in their decision-making process if you were to send it back to them.
Yeah. Can we just back this up a little bit? Maybe we can go about it one by one here and get head nods. So first item I would ask is the three hundred thousand dollars for the future projects, is that something we're interested in, in having outlet set aside? Don?
Without a plan, I don't think that they can.
Okay. And keep in mind also, we set aside, how much? Ten, ten percent?
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, fifteen percent.
So that would have been four hundred and fifty thousand instead of hundred and fifty. Okay. Deanna?
Three hundred thousand, Madeline, like, you want to explain that these were like money that was awarded in previous years. Am I correct?
There is money that's awarded each year, but out of the money that we receive, we set aside fifteen percent each year of the revenue. And then that goes into a capital fund pro, uh, you know, pot essentially. And each year that fifteen percent of the revenue that we are going to receive gets set aside. So.
And that money was, it was ideally you set aside to do something with a convention center for the city. That's what that money was for.
The, the fifteen percent?
Yeah, that's why we, we put it in there. Right. And so one of the questions came up is, before we even started this whole thing is, okay, you know, is that realistic? Can we build the convention center at this rate? And the answer is no, right? So could it be used for other projects that can either bring in revenue or lead to more tourism, which leads to more heads and beds? So that was the intent for that from the beginning.
But so is the intent still to build the convention center or it's any and all?
It, it could be other projects. Yeah, yeah. It could be in conjunction with a, a convention center.
Okay. Yeah. All right. I'll continue to, Mark?
Oh, did you get my answer?
Oh, yes. Go ahead. Sorry.
No.
Okay, Mark? The question is, do we want, would we prefer the three hundred thousand to be set aside for X future projects in addition to the hundred and fifty? No. Judy? No. Okay. So we have a majority there already. So now we have three hundred more. So, Don, are you interested in funding any and all operations of the police for the Spring Fest? Right?
Uh, uh, maybe in a portion, maybe not all of it, as he was alluding that.
Half?
Yeah.
Deanna?
Whatever we, um, wouldn't normally be spending on if it was just a regular day.
Well, so I'd have to, so we had twenty-five-ish officers each day. Eight officers were detectives that were mostly rescheduled. Uh, you probably had a couple of admin people. So you're talking roughly ten, excuse me, twelve to fifteen. I'll just call it twelve. So you're roughly twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars for the weekend, give or take. I'm, I'm probably off a little bit. Those are conservative numbers. Can, can I interject here really quick? I just, I just want to make a statement so that we're all on the same page. The forty thousand dollars was not what we used at Spring Fest that year, last year. The total amount used for Spring Fest that was dedicated to Spring Fest was sixty-five thousand dollars yet last year. For city staff support. That was, um, police, fire, parks maintenance and, um, streets for street closures. It was a total of sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we asked for forty thousand dollars for event support throughout the year. That's not just Spring Fest. We keep coming back to Spring Fest, but we also have sip and stroll, brews and tunes, all those other things. So the ask was not to cover everything. The ask was to help defray that cost. So the forty thousand dollars probably amounts to about half of what we do in a year.
Then the forty thousand.
Mark?
So where I'm at is, is this one, I, I'm, cause it comes back to my, how do these events figure out how to pay their fair share of the cost? And I would like it to go back to them to say, we can do this one of a couple of ways. We can get it through LTAC because it's important that we have everybody's security and, and, uh, safety in mind. Um, or we can divide it up per event and you pay your fair share. It, cause at some point, as these events, which I love, are getting bigger and bigger, the cost isn't going to go down.
Correct.
It's going to be taxing.
But what do we do for the next year?
But that's what I'm saying is I'm, I want them to look at it that way. I'm interested in getting some of, some of that funded. Which I didn't sound like it's all funded. Um, so this number is fine with, or with, with my concern is otherwise, what do we do in the future as these events grow? And we want them to grow.
Judy? Dave? Victor?
When these questions came up, um, I abstained because I felt it was a conflict of interest being on council and I'll abstain here as well.
Okay. I am in favor of funding the event support. So, sounds like forty thousand for the event support.
Your Honor, um, one quick thing, um, the city attorney just reminded me.
Ten o'clock. So will we please, uh, I would accept a motion to extend the meeting? Uh, half an hour.
So, so moved? Did we get a second already?
Nope. Say, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Keep going. Thank you. Uh, sorry, Victor, were you, you, oh yeah, you abstained. Okay. So, uh, I was going to start with you, but I'm going to assume you're going to abstain entirely, right? Okay. So the next one would be the operations of surf and slide and the museum. Is there any, Dave, do you have any desire to see that funded through LTAC? Okay, how much?
Yeah, okay, um. Oh, how do those split between surf and slide and museum?
Uh, well, I, I would say probably seventy, thirty, mostly to, to surf and slide, um, thirty to museum would be my guess. Uh, we hadn't really drove, drove down into a number. We had just looked at relieving some of the pressure on the budget itself. But I would say seventy, thirty. That would make sense to me.
Are you saying then two hundred and ten thousand goes to surf and slide and then ninety thousand goes to the museum? If you're doing that ratio?
I was just doing percentages.
Yeah, but based on that percentage, that's two, ten and, and ninety, right? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And keeping in mind that, I mean, it's all the general fund. It's one fund. It's not, we're not, uh, that's why I wasn't splitting it because I was looking at it like this is all going to the general fund. So.
Uh, just for reference, the, the city subsidizes the museum to the tune of about seven hundred thousand dollars per year. Surf and slide, it's roughly break in, break even operationally, but when you count, when you put in the
Maintenance.
The capital costs and things like that, then the, the city's subsidizing it.
Yeah. And actually operationally, I would say we're subsidizing it as well because it doesn't, our budget doesn't factor in the full-time staff hours that are at surf and slide. We dedicate one park maintenance tech to surf and slide the entire summer. So there's somebody there every single day.
Um, I would, I would fund a two hundred thousand dollars of surf and slide and, um, not include anything for the museum.
Okay. So we hear two hundred thousand for the surf and slide and nothing for the museum. I would agree with that. Judy? Mark? Are you with this?
So, uh, I, I am a believer in the surf and slide and the bed and ads. I would, uh, I would have them take a look at it. I could get behind two hundred and, yeah, the museum. I can't get behind.
Okay. Thank you. Deanna?
Lots of tough one. I like the museum, but I don't like the idea that we're subsidizing it by seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And we're trying to do more, give it more. Um, but I do love the museum. Don't get me wrong. I do think that surf and slide provides not just for people all over the state, but for our own citizens. Um, and I feel, um, deeply about, uh, supporting, supporting the surf and slide. Um, I would say it three hundred still.
Don?
Let's go with the two hundred. I was thinking two, ten, like seventy, thirty, but.
So it sounds like two hundred for the surf and slide, zero for the museum. I think the final question to consider is the MLIRD seventy-five thousand is the ask. Don?
With more information, yeah. I, I think they should be considered.
Okay. Deanna?
Same.
Mark? Dave?
I'm fifty and, and more information.
Fifty. With this, cool. Okay, I'm, I, yeah, I think there's enough to, we would like to consider the MLIRD for the seventy-five, but we would prefer some more information. Whether again, that be chemical application or capital investment in harvesters. Or whatever else they do. Maybe convince the news outlets on the west side to not talk about our natural occurring foliage we have here.
So can, can you run through, can we run through those one more time? I just want to make sure I got it correct.
Yep.
Forty thousand dollars towards staff costs for special events.
Yep.
Two hundred thousand towards surf and slide operations.
Yep.
And seventy-five thousand towards the water quality program, provided they give us information on that.
That's right. And then the balance, I guess, would go to the future fund.
If there is. Fund would, would pick up. So that would leave, uh, five thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars in the future fund. Going towards the future, but.
Okay.
So I'm going to take that back to the LTAC committee.
Just to clarify what you said, it's not, they need to give us what they're going to spend it on, but and we give them the money. We, we need to be okay with what they're going to spend the money on. I mean, you said it kind of differently.
Yeah.
They, they need to provide information that then LTAC then rec, makes a recommendation to you and you guys get to approve. It's the same process.
Right. Just so we're sure, LTAC needs to be okay with it based on the idea that we kind of want them to look at it.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's what I will take back to lodging tax advisory committee and have them review that really quick. And hopefully we can get that back to you at your next meeting.
Perfect. All right. That was quick and painless. Thank you all. Uh, okay, we're going to go back real quickly because I know Richard is dying to give us our other options. So Richard? We're back on old business item number three for the record, which is our reservoir sizing conversation.
Okay. So I plugged, I plugged in, at the forty-five hundred total, thirteen hundred existing. Uh, and then the new services, the sixty-six, thirty-three percentage. Um, and the minimum required diameter is just over forty-five feet, forty-five point six. And if I go eighty, twenty, it's just under forty-five feet, like forty-four point four.
So it goes from fifty to forty-five?
It goes from fifty to forty-five. And then if you plug that number in to the little, uh, uh, spreadsheet I had for the cost, it takes the number to approximately six point two five million.
It shaves off about five hundred thousand off your smaller option.
Correct. That's at the sixty-six, thirty-three?
Essentially either.
To do with the other one percent.
I'm sorry, what?
You never asked me what I wanted to do with the other one percent.
I, I, what do you want to do?
Drink it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. What about the eighty, twenty?
Like I said, the eighty, twenty was just under, it was like forty-four point four. And the, uh, sixty-six, thirty-three was forty-five point six. So I would round them both to forty-five feet.
Okay. So we're not really gaining much.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, all right. Well, uh, Um, all right, well, uh, with all of that in consideration, does anybody have a clear idea in their mind of what they may want to do? Don?
How much was the cost of the the forty-five?
Six point, approximately six point two five million.
And that served how many ERUs approximately?
So that was planning for forty-five hundred, uh, thirteen hundred at existing. And then a e- essentially either or, you could go all the way up to eighty-twenty or uh sixty-six thirty-three split. To at two hundred versus uh five sixty-two.
That seems reasonable at a sixty unit build rate, I mean that's fifty years at least.
So, Don, if I'm hearing you properly, you're probably near number four as your option.
Yeah.
Okay, Deanna? Okay. Judy? You want the bigger one, right? Okay. Victor? Preference bigger or smaller? Okay, Dave?
I'd like to see one other number, but almost small right now, but.
Yeah, sounds like we're all relatively comfortable with four.
Okay, so so that would be the forty-five foot diameter tank.
Uh, that would be the, I is the way I understood it, I think what Don was saying is still would we want the fifty foot diameter tank?
And so I what Richard just created was is an option number five?
Yeah, so that, yeah, option five would be a forty-five foot diameter tank.
Yeah, for me, the money savings isn't good enough to do it, but.
So so you would you would prefer the fifty foot by a fifty foot diameter tank?
You didn't need to do all the extra work, I would have.
Oh, oh, for you, yeah, okay, so I guess.
I just wanted to put it in a little bit more perspective so that four wasn't the lowest.
Yeah, okay, yeah, um, so yeah, either way, just let me let me, so forty-five or fifty, are we all talking the same thing or or not?
Yes, fifty.
Fifty, okay.
Because it's five feet bigger.
Great.
Your Honor, would it be okay if we just did a vote on that? I just want clear direction.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we pursue item or option four, which is the fifty-fifty with the forty-five hundred units, the the fifty foot diameter tank, fifty foot diameter tank. Okay, yes, sir, the original option four. Okay.
Sixteen hundred homes, five hundred and sixty-two gallons?
No, as we already clarified, if the numbers come in better, we'll just re reallocate the numbers, but again, as Richard pointed out, you still have that fire flow number, which does not change. You still have your uh emergency or your emergency rather, so that you don't get the whole enchilada that way.
I'll second your motion.
So we have a motion in a second for option four, as was presented by Richard. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Me?
Uh, motion passes five to one. Six to one, sorry. Didn't count myself, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, that concludes item number three, and it looks like we have made it through all of our items, so this point, we have a couple of staff reports, which I hope are brief. From our Fire Chief Art Perillo first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have a quick uh staff report for the feasibility study. Several months ago, the the RFP went out for a feasibility study. The companies that uh that put in were narrowed down to two companies, those companies were interviewed last week. And the result was a selection of Burke, which is a Washington-based company to do the feasibility study. Uh, they they have the contract right now, they're going through the contract, and we have a tentative date for a kickoff meeting of November tenth.
Excellent.
Chief, the it's going to be within budget, do you remember the number?
Budget is seventy-five thousand and so far is it it is under budget from what we're looking like, the last uh, can't give you an exact cost because we have to calculate out the travel. Because the travel piece is included, but it's going to be separate from the overall cost of the thing.
But they are in Washington, so the travel should be minimal, correct?
That is correct, they are on the west side.
We won't hold that against them, all right. We have a, we have a topic for other, Rob.
Just just in case, but given the hour, I got nothing.
Perfect, all right, we're gonna go to council committee reports, which I know will be brief, so uh, starting with Councilmember Myers.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Fancher?
Nah.
Okay, Councilmember Lombardi?
Oh, yeah, sure, um.
Uh, I like yours, so go ahead.
Okay, Port of Moses Lake, uh, Executive Director Dan Rhodes, um, signed the uh, what we call the Jeremy Davis Darren Jackson Interlocal Agreement, which was to rent some equipment from them because that was the cheapest option to get, and they'll be doing the work. So he signed that uh LTA and he also authorized what is in essence uh, an engineering feasibility study to obtain water from the West Canal. Uh, W twenty lateral is a long-term source for portable water, potable, excuse me. Uh, they're also working with the Port of Quincy, um, on the lining state level talks. And a fusion company has engaged a port on their future growth prospects. That'll be it.
Thank you, they got a few things going, okay, Councilmember Martinez did have one thing to add.
Yeah, so thanks to Commissioner uh Rob Jones for setting up a treatment facility, water wastewater treatment facility uh tour in Richland. Um, it was interesting and what I liked about the group that showed up was that I think we're all on board and uh wanting to go in in the same direction and wanting to work together um to address some of these things, so.
That's fair and accurate. Okay, Councilmember Scott? Did I already call on you? Um, I also attended the meeting at the Richland Water Works with Councilmember Martinez. And I want to thank the staff there, they were extremely knowledgeable and helpful. And definitely uh gave me some inspiration to think about the possibilities in the future for better water sources, so that's pretty big news. Uh, the council also had a chance to attend the Chamber Annual, uh, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet or Annual Meeting, which uh was a thrill for all of us and it's great to hear all the great things that our business community is doing in Moses Lake. Um, I feel like there was another one, but there was also a youth dynamics uh charity auction that was attended by a few council members, so a lot going on in the community that we're part of, um.
I don't have anything either.
Did I ask, sorry, Judy? Yeah, I thought you said pass. Think it's past all of our bedtime. Okay, I will announce the next meetings, which are special meeting November sixth. And we have a regular meeting November the twelfth. Special meeting in November sixth is for what, Rob?
It's a joint meeting with uh Library Board, um, members, the two that are from Ranick County.
Yep.
And then I believe we also have a budget workshop that night.
Perfect, all right.
Uh, and note that that that's a Thursday night, just 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 so you know, it's a Thursday night. There's a reason for that, I just can't remember it because it's late.
And I will take this moment to remind everyone, we have a, an AGCT, Association of Grant County Cities and Towns, meeting on Thursday at Del Red at six o'clock. All right, and Tamara will be there, so it'll be really fun, okay? Um, all right, at this time, we will go ahead, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and we will go into executive session for twenty minutes uh to discuss potential litigation presented to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten with no action to follow.